Good evening. This meeting in the Board of Education for March 4th, 2013 is called to order. Welcome to everyone here and to our television viewers. All items that will be voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. You're also able to check the website and find it via our web archives. Student Representative Garcia is absent this evening, as is Director Sergeant. At this time, we allow for 20 minutes of public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes. Our first two speakers are Greg Burrell and Bill Dis.
Great. So if they could come forward, as you're coming forward, I'm going to read the instructions for public comment, just so everybody's familiar with them. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but we will follow up on various issues that are raised. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, there will be a green light that will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will appear, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time, and I will help you remember that if, for some reason, you're going a little bit long. We sincerely appreciate your input, and we thank you for your cooperation.
You begin?
You are first, said Greg.
Okay. My name is Greg Burrell, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. Board co-chairs, members, superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. Again, I am a teacher, but I address you for the third time as an education stakeholder. You recall that the first time, I thanked you for your service. The last time, I shared the idea of having all education stakeholders sitting at the reform table, led by teachers and parents, those who actually interact with students on a daily basis. This is particularly important because almost every successful business leader, politician, and professional comes from the minority of all students. Most students never become financially or professionally successful as you leaders have become, yet decisions about schooling for every child are made almost exclusively by those whose personal and family experience with school is abnormal, as measured statistically. Let me take a survey, and don't let me intimidate you. How many of you have ever been teachers? Great. How many of you have been building administrators? How many of you have five or more years' experience in either one of those jobs? Fantastic. That reassures me, right? Because, well, PPS caps pupil loads at 180 students. If I have 180 students and I spend 10 minutes per student per week grading their work, that's 30 hours of the 37 and a half hours I'm paid for. In math, I can mark problems right or wrong pretty quickly, but how often will I spend my time thinking about why that student's answer is wrong and give personalized feedback on daily homework, weekly quizzes, or large unit tests? More and more, teachers must give multiple-choice tests, no feedback, no partial credit, no practice in writing the answers, and many opportunities for failure to accurately assess student strengths and weaknesses. I am, for example, trained in writing across the curriculum. How often do you think any math teacher requires students at the high school level to explain in paragraphs how they solve a problem and give feedback in written English? If I'm an English teacher with that load, how will I teach students to better construct arguments for their theses? If I'm a history teacher, how will I teach that a historian constructs a personal account of history by reading and interpreting source documents as opposed to assessing students' mastery of memorizing simple facts and regurgitating them on a test that I can integrate into a grade book in a few seconds? My time to address you is almost up, but we haven't talked about the 22 and a half hours the teacher spends teaching, the time teachers must spend answering parent emails, contacting disengaged parents, contacting counselors about evidence of student issues, looking up the longitudinal records of new students, attending IEP meetings, staff meetings, mandatory...
Thank you.
You can read the rest of the list.
That'd be great.
It's a long list. Thank you very much.
Dear Madam Superintendent and Board Members, I want to thank everyone and all the guests tonight. I'm here tonight to speak about two things. One is an update on Planned Parenthood, which I discussed in December, and the other is religious freedom of employees at Portland Public School. Planned Parenthood did release new numbers this January and showed that they did kill 333,964,000 babies this past year. And again, I don't see how that helps in terms of increasing enrollment at Portland Public Schools. I also wanted to encourage all of you, like I did last time, that usually when someone has something like this, they're seeking some void in their life, and our Heavenly Father, again, seeks all of us, he desires all of us, and any void in our life, if we try to fill it with, you know, drugs, sex, liquor, whatever, it's just not going to happen. Like, a lot of college students do that, and it just doesn't work. Secondly, for about six years, it's gone on to the seventh year now, I teach in the district, and once they found out that I was working for Life and Purity, they were pretty upset, and there's been, just this year alone, there's been, believe it or not, 30-some observations of district officials, principals, vice principals, or Planned Parenthood officials in my class. And many of the meetings, you know, the lawyers attended, Jeff Fish is one of your lawyers, and back in 2008, he wrote this. "This memo summarizes our discussion day regarding your identification as a Benson or PPS employee or teacher while publicly expressing your religious or political beliefs." As with any Portland Public School employee, you have the right to express your personal political or religious opinion. I don't see that's very true after six years here. However, recent events have raised some concerns about whether statements you make might reasonably be interpreted as implying that the district supports your personal opinion or that you are speaking on behalf of the district or Benson High School. Well, I think unfortunately that the city knows that you folks are, that you certainly like Planned Parenthood and all their services, which is unfortunate. But I am just wondering why that didn't go both ways. Because, and I have it here, the, one of the recruitment packages that Portland Public Schools and Planned Parenthood put together, it's the Vietnamese one, said that Bill Dis was in favor of Planned Parenthood and in favor of their program at Benson High School. And I certainly am not, and it's caused quite a bit of...
Thank you.
...consternation on my part to try to retract that.
Thank you.
All right. And I do have a couple of things for you folks, too.
Ms. Hewson?
Our next speakers are Jenny Richardson and Adela Chavez.
My name is Jenny Richardson, and I'm coming here tonight to speak to you as a parent. My daughter is a kindergartner at Chief Joe Elementary, and I want to talk to you about considering pulling practices from the Portland Public Schools that are shaming in discipline and classroom management. One of the practices that my daughter's classroom does is clip charts, which is a chart that has different categories. The middle category, where the kids begin their day, says "Ready to Learn," and then as their behavior is good, they move up, and as their behavior is bad, they move down. And this is publicly displayed in the classroom, and it's very disturbing to me as a parent that the children's self-esteem is damaged if they're the, one of the children that are always at the bottom of the chart. So I'm asking you to get in touch with your own personal moral compass as a parent, as an educator, and think about how you would feel if you're five or six and you are entering with great enthusiasm and a desire to please your teacher and please your mom, and you are struggling for some reason. You know, a lot of the children that are at the bottom are minority kids, foster kids, children that have challenges at home, and the kids that are at the top are also suffering in that way that they learn values that are not values that we want to put forward or that I believe in, which is to stigmatize their peers, to have a sense of inflation. My daughter was bullied at a preschool before we started kindergarten, and so I've worked as a mom very hard at helping her to not revictimize herself and to also not imitate the bullying practices, and I feel that the public ranking of our children on a daily basis gives, stigmatizes kids in a way that is adult-sanctioned and is much more powerful to the children than if it were them making those judgments on themselves. So I believe that methods like this don't belong in a public school, and I've brought my concerns to the principal, to this teacher, to Antonio, to Tammy Jackson, and we've had long discussions of them, and a couple of things have emerged, and one of the things is that my family has been treated very badly for speaking out about this issue. We have been asked to leave the school, and so...
Thank you.
Yeah, that, this is, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Adela Chavez, and I am a parent of three children at different schools in the district, and I am very distressed for two reasons. One is that you have Planned Parenthood teaching at my daughter's school, and secondly, I understand that when a teacher stands up to protect our kids, they are persecuted. Two of my nieces were taught by Mr. Bill Diaz at Benson years ago, and they really appreciate him a big deal. It has come to my attention that he has really been persecuted for years because of his respect for Life and Purity and for protecting the students at Benson and other schools. This needs to stop. Teachers like Mr. Bill Diaz should be commended for protecting the children and standing up for the kids and for guiding them to the right path. We need more teachers like Mr. Bill Diaz in the district who do more than just teach the curriculum and help children in all areas of their life. To give you an example of how he helps, I want to share you a story. Three years ago, our family, three years ago, our community was devastated when Jose Hernandez Ruiz and four members of his family were killed in a tragic accident. Nobody from the district came to the funeral but Mr. Bill Diaz. He was the only one from the district volunteered to speak at the memorial service. He spoke the following in Spanish and English, and I will read you a version. "Today, we remember Jose Hernandez Ruiz, a very happy, energetic young man. I always remember him with his smile. He shared his beautiful smile with us on earth. He still shares it with us in another way. I think of how Mother Teresa told us, 'Every time you smile at someone, it is an action of love, a gift to that person, a beautiful thing.'" Jose certainly gave us many gifts with his smile. In thinking of how fast he left us, I think he left us an important message. We never know when we are going to be called home to our Heavenly Father. We need to live life each day with love and bring in love to everyone by telling everyone we love them with words and smile. I support Portland Public Schools with my property taxes. I am a parent of three children in different school districts, and I'm here to represent today a large group of parents who gather on their day off to discuss their concerns about the district allowing Planned Parenthood in our district. We are concerned all the harm it affects, the cost this sexual post to our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Therese Rusink and John Rochado.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
My name's Therese Rusink, and as a parent of a student in Portland Public Schools and as a former employee of PPS, I'm extremely alarmed about having Planned Parenthood's programs in our schools. Why does the biggest abortion provider in the nation now have access to our kids in our schools? Doesn't this seem like a conflict of interest to you? Abortion is the leading cause of death in Oregon by far. It's way above accidents, cancer, heart disease, and respiratory diseases, and it's completely preventable. An average of 29 Oregonians a day are aborted. You wonder why student enrollment is down? A quarter to a third of the population has been wiped out, and you're allowing Planned Parenthood to have their programs and sex ed in our schools. You're being complicit with Planned Parenthood's agenda, and it's absolutely reprehensible. It's so upsetting that you are letting, putting Portland's students in harm's way. Planned Parenthood has a well-documented record of financial fraud and showcasing pornographic materials and their use. They were caught on videotape aiding a pimp's underage sex ring by live-action video. Is that helping women and girls? Is that helping students? No, it's aiding and abetting sexual predators. Putting Planned Parenthood's programs in the schools was a very poorly thought-out decision. There's no such thing as sexual morality in the philosophy of Planned Parenthood, which can be summarized by this phrase: "If it feels good, do it. Just make sure you protect yourself with our products first." And by the way, their products, according to Consumer Reports, are the cheapest ones and have a high failure rate. This provides Planned Parenthood with even more money from abortions after the birth control they give out fails. And it does fail. When we are over at Planned Parenthood, where they're doing chemical and surgical abortions up to seven days a week, there are anywhere between six and 12 girls or young women having abortions there in the short time, a stupid hour and a half, that we're there, and almost all of them tell us that they were on either one or two methods of birth control when they got pregnant. How is putting a girl in a position of having an unplanned pregnancy caring about her health? How is that caring about people? Please know, they are literally killing people, little people, seven days a week with chemical and surgical abortions at Planned Parenthood. Bishop Kenneth Steiner from Portland wanted to speak to the school board, but he was unable to come.
Thank you.
However, he wanted me to deliver the message that we have a duty to protect our kids from a culture that puts their physical, emotional, and spiritual health at risk.
Please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's our official time like?
Three minutes?
Three minutes. Wow.
Yellow light goes on at two, or when you have one minute left.
Am I started already?
No, she'll hit the start button when you start.
Oh, okay. All right. My name is John Rochado. I'd like to say I was a recent graduate of Benson, but it's been a long time. I graduated in 1977. I graduated with honors. I was a roast festival driver. I drove Lionel Hollands in the 1977 NBA championship parade. I have several lifelong friends from Benson. I also have several lifelong friends from other schools that I've attended. I went to Holy Redeemer Grade School over in North Portland. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Portland in mechanical engineering. I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering from Washington State. I've worked with people from all over the world and enjoyed it, and I can say that Bill Dis and I have a lot in common. I've known him for at least six years. He's a great guy. He's a very upstanding, moral fellow. In this country, you should be allowed to voice your opinions and stand up for your beliefs. I'm a practicing Catholic. I don't, in any way, feel embarrassed or ashamed about that. Certainly, the Catholic Church has had its share of issues over the last many decades as we're describing with Planned Parenthood, so we could try to ratchet up all the wrongs and all the rights, but in the end, we should always try to do what's right. In my particular case, having listened to Bill, listened to other people, I felt Bill's been unfairly targeted. Unfortunately, I think he made a couple of mistakes with regards to legalities, if you will, but they were pretty trite. I mean, many people that are convicted of robberies with guns, the first thing they drop is the gun charges. The worst thing I heard about Bill was that he picked up a Planned Parenthood poster or some damn thing that was left behind, you know? I don't want to completely trivialize that he shouldn't have done it. He knew he shouldn't have done it. He was the first one to the plate to tell him that he made a mistake. He involved the police himself, blah, 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 blah. So in the end, Bill and I are both Catholic, practicing Catholics in the Knights of Columbus. Regardless of who you may know who's Catholic, in the end, Catholic Church is about the right to life. Bill has stood up for that. It's pretty apparent to me that the school itself targeted him with the Planned Parenthood meeting that they needed to present at the school. They have several teachers. It's not an accident that they targeted him, I'm sure. You know, you'd have to be a fool to believe otherwise. I hope that all of you have come here tonight with an open mind about this decision. Political correctness is crap. Give me 10 seconds.
10 seconds.
It's not against the law to be in favor of right to life. It's not against the law to be in favor of traditional marriage and things of those narrative nature. There are many people that believe that.
Thank you.
And a public school has an agenda, and part of it is to push people out. There's many forms of diversity, and one of them is faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to move on to the next item in our agenda, classified employee recognition. We are pleased to acknowledge our classified employees tonight. Classified Employees Recognition Week is March 4th through March 9th, and I think it's fair to say that we, as a board, are very, very happy with all the work that our classified employees do, and we know how often it's the day-to-day operations that actually make something run, and we just want to say thank you and that we value the work that our classified employees do. Superintendent Smith, I believe you have our resolution that you can read for us.
Yes, so I just want to join Kutcher, Belial, in thanking all of our classified employees, and I will read to you the content of the resolution, number 4735, which is our recognition of Classified Employee Appreciation Week. Portland Public Schools' classified employees are essential members of our educational team. They are often our ambassadors to the public, as well as caring, familiar people in the lives of our students. On the front lines and behind the scenes, our classified employees create a positive learning environment for our students by assisting them in the classroom, preparing and serving meals, caring for their physical needs, transporting them, keeping them safe, and aiding their families. They keep our administrative and school offices humming, attend to our buildings and grounds, help us communicate with each other and our community, shepherd supplies and equipment, and so much more. We are grateful for their support. The Board of Education for Portland Public Schools acknowledges and applauds Portland Public Schools' assistive tech practitioners, attendance monitors, book clerks, bookkeepers, bus drivers, campus monitors, clerks, community agents, CNAs, custodians, educational assistants, food service assistants, instructional lab technology assistants, library assistants, maintenance workers, nutrition services workers, orthopedic equipment techs, occupational and physical therapists, paraeducators, secretaries, security techs, sign language interpreters, and transportation route schedulers. For their efforts on behalf of the 47,000 students in our district, the classified employees deserve recognition and thanks. Thank you to all of you, and please note that we're highlighting classified employees who have been nominated to represent all of their colleagues who are being featured here tonight. So please join me in just thanking all of our classified employees.
I don't want to preempt the video. I want to make sure we get everybody in, but maybe while we're still viewing that, we can consider Resolution 4735, Resolution to recognize Classified Employees Appreciation Week, March 4th through 9th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
To move to...
Director Regan moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Director Noel seconds. Motion to adopt Resolution 4735. Ms. Hewson, is there any citizen comment? No? Is there any board discussion?
No, it's great.
No? Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I heard just a "thank you." So the board will now vote on Resolution 4735. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4735 is approved by a vote of 6 to 0, with Student Representative Garcia and Sergeant absent, excuse me, and Director Sergeant absent. Give a minute for that video. We're going to now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Madison Cluster Update. We are always very excited to have our cluster principals come join us and assistants and vice principals come join us for this monthly presentation. These presentations feature a different school cluster each month and allow the board to conduct a deeper dive on milestone data at the school level. We have allocated one hour for this item, 30-minute presentation, 30 minutes for questions from the board. As a reminder, the milestones are on the board's work plan this year as a monitoring item. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Smith, who can introduce staff.
And first, I'd like to welcome the Madison Cluster Principals, and thank you for being here tonight, and then introduce Sue Ann Higgins, our chief academic officer, who will introduce the regional administrators and give us the introduction for the report, but we're excited to have all of you here tonight.
Good evening, co-chairs, school board directors, and Superintendent Smith. It's a pleasure to share with you the work in the Madison Cluster this evening, and so I'd like to invite my colleagues, Regional Administrator Carl Logan and Trip Goodall, rather Greg Wallach, excuse me, to share the work of this group of leaders and what's going on in their schools. So, Carl?
Excited about tonight so that you have the opportunity to hear the voices of our building leaders in the Madison Cluster. So I'd like to introduce them, and as I say our building leaders' names, please stand so the board can see your faces clearly. We have Philippe Haristik at Creative Science, Principal John Walden, and Assistant Principal Sylvia Hassan at Harrison Park, Principal Christie Lindholm at Rigler, Principal Leslie Odell, and Assistant Principal Susan Cosmala at Lee, Principal Sarah Lewins, and Assistant Principal Joy Williams at Roseway, Principal Susan Foxman, and Assistant Principal Sarah Jones at Vestal, and Principal Vernice Gutierrez, and Assistant Principal Selena Garrido at Scott. And again, I'm extremely honored to work alongside these building leaders, and I'm looking forward to hearing them share about their challenges and their victories in their school communities. So for the K8s, we will have Sarah Lewins from Roseway speak, and Christie Lindholm at Rigler speak.
Is it on here? Somebody named Teri set it up. There it is. How nice. We've got to get back to the beginning. Don't look yet.
These always make me a little dizzy.
Okay, I won't do it so fast. So when we found out we had the opportunity to present tonight, I jumped on it because I wanted to really share some fabulous things that are going on at our school and brag a little bit, and it would be my pleasure to tell you about it. I'm Christie. I'm the principal at Rigler, and I'm serving... I'm the principal at Rigler, and I'm serving my sixth year there. So I've had a long time to get in and really get my feet wet and look at some sustainable changes and improvements for our school. So great things that are going on. Just quickly, we call ourselves The Rig, just for fun. You need some levity. We're thrilled to be a K5 and want to thank you guys for the work that you helped us do to get back to the right size so we fit in our building and can really focus, not on facilities, but on instruction. We are a focused school this year. We are blessed to have a tremendously excellent staff who work really hard to serve our kids and meet their needs. We're focused on developing and implementing sustainable systems and really focus on instruction. For the past several years, we've been focused on things that are systemic around behavior management and discipline, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So this time, at this juncture, we've turned a corner. We're really looking at instruction. We are in PLCs and data teams all the time. We have instructional coaches that work with teachers on literacy, math, and behavior, really deepening our practice in instruction. We have an awesome dual-language program that is growing and serving our kids very well. In our K-2 classes, we're teaching ELD in the classroom, not pull-out.
Christie, I'm going to interrupt. Anytime you're using PLCs or ELD, will you say?
Too many jargonisms? So Professional Learning Community is a PLC. They are grade-level teams and really set up with, they're pretty set practices that teams engage in in order to get their work done. ELD is English Language Development. And so rather than pull kids out for ESL, we're doing it in the classroom with our classroom teachers. And the last thing that I'm going to focus mostly on tonight is our use of restorative justice. And I wanted to frame that as a way that we've really changed the game for our children and for our teachers. Briefly, this is just a look at who we are. So you can see, we're an interesting group. We have a lot of, just demographically interesting, lots of things going on. I want to focus tonight on our elimination of the discipline gap or the predictability by race of what would happen to a child in our discipline system, either at school or in the district. And we've been able to really tackle that at school. So looking, in 2008, we received information, not just about our data. We knew what our data was by numbers. What we didn't know, had never looked at, was the relative rate of exclusionary practices or looking at it as students of color to white students. And when we first got that information, we were pretty horrified. It was really bad. So 2008, 2009, if you were Native American, you were suspended at a rate of five to one to a white kid, four to one for black kids, and two to one for Hispanics. The very next year, we were able to have that or better and reduce that rate from two to one, point five to one for Hispanic, and point two five to one for Asian students. We were, we were pretty panicked, thinking we are not handling this very well. So took a number of pretty drastic measures and then knew we needed to really change the way we were conducting business in order to make change with the rest. So now, I don't know why that box is up there. In our current year, I'm happy to say that as of now, we've eliminated the gap. You can't predict by race anymore what will happen to a child at our school. Ninety percent of all of our kids never have any discipline interaction, no referrals, no ruffles. The data that you're going to look at is comprised of only 46 students. Thirty-six of those students are male. Sixteen of them have an IEP. And most of those IEPs are fairly extensive and would pretty much lend themselves to a child having difficulty regulating their behavior. So at this point, referral and incident rates, if you're a black or a multiracial child, about 16% of those children are, have a referral of some sort. And a referral could be anything from big to small. It's something that a teacher felt was significant enough to record as a way that we know we need to, to do something. For Hispanic children, 4.5%, and white kids, 14%. Of those incidents, those that resulted in suspension or exclusionary discipline, we've reduced the rates for black and multiracial children to 5.8%, for Hispanic to 0.8%, and for white children, 6.4%. So you can no longer predict, based on race, what, what kind of discipline or interaction with the discipline system you'd have at our school. And my husband pointed out that I gave myself a gold star there, which I did. So how do we get there? Really, two ways. We adopted restorative justice as the foundation and the philosophy behind how we're administering discipline and how we think about the children that we serve. And we really revamped, overhauled our whole PBIS classroom management system. We took a hard look at who we as adults, who are we, what do we bring to school, and how do we contribute to the success and failures of our children at school? And what do we, what roadblocks do we put up that don't allow kids to succeed? We adopted the use of CHAMPs as a school-wide practice and trained all the teachers. We also worked with Resolutions Northwest and the Northwest Health Foundation to apply for a grant, which we received, for a three-year period of time to work with a restorative justice specialist. So he's been working with us since December of 2010. Alongside of all this work, we redesigned the job position of a student management specialist and really designed that position to be a coach, both for students and for staff, to be able to look at why are things happening, what, what needs to happen, how can we look at this differently? We engaged in relentless examination of data and framed all things discipline through the lens of race and equity and really look at how we were contributing to the school, the prison pipeline. What was our place in it? How are we supporting it? And how are we going to dismantle it? And we engaged in a lot of training about restorative practices, what is restorative justice? What does it look like in the ground, in the classroom? We did training on using circling techniques as a way to build community and foster social-emotional development, both for adults and for students in our school. Just in case you don't know about restorative justice, its basic tenets is a focus on repairing harm. So when you look at that through a discipline system, you're not focused on punishment or consequences. You're focused on learning and reparation of harm. We ask that offenders take responsibility for what they did and make it right with the victim. We look, we help offenders examine the intent and the impact of their actions. And restorative justice involves encounter. You have to work with the victim, the offender, and their community members, which for students could be their peers, it could be families, it could be teachers or other adults in the building. So encounter, reparation, transformation, with the ultimate goal of building peace. So now, we are able to look at ourselves from a really different lens and feel good about the community that we're building, how we're reaching out to students and families. We have used restorative justice in combination with our equity work to offer restorative listening sessions to our families and have parents and teachers get together and talk about what works at our school and what, what, what do we need to keep working on. Very collaborative, a lot of open-door practice, teachers talking to one another, sharing with one another, getting involved in instruction and discipline practice. Our staff walk the talk. We use mediation amongst ourselves. We use it with our kids. We sit in a circle when we are in staff meetings, so we're asking teachers to do it with kids. In class, we do it too, for our staff meetings. And I think with all the changes, we're really better able to enjoy each other, to enjoy our kids, to engage more fully with our families. We do home visits. There's a lot more reaching out to families. And everybody seems happier. So finally, we recognize that Rigler presents many unique challenges, but we've all chosen very deliberately to work there. We know we're making a tremendous difference, and restorative justice has helped us change the game for our kids.
I don't have any fancy PowerPoint. It's a nice job. Carl asked me to share with you kind of the transformative work we're doing at Roseway Heights around supporting our students with special ed. Roseway Heights has three self-contained classrooms focusing on kids with severe behavior needs and has had those for many years. And it became apparent, last year was my first year there, and it became apparent as we were talking and looking at our data and talking with staff at Madison, that we were contributing on sending kids, as long as they were remaining in a self-contained setting, away from the general ed curriculum, that their, the statistics were very poor or very much against them graduating from high school on time with credits. And so we started looking at the work we were doing and really thinking, we cannot be contributing to this on an ongoing basis. Every year, the longer they were staying in there, the least, the less likely they would be successful. So we met with Madison, and we spent a lot of time last spring, thinking, how could we do things differently? And the first day of school this year, we had all of our students, all 60 of the students who are identified for special education, were assigned to a general ed classroom. They were in general ed all day for the first two weeks of school. And it was transformative. For some of these students, they had not been in a general ed setting, especially those who were fifth, sixth, or seventh graders, had not been in for two, three, four years. They had been in self-contained settings. So they were nervous. We were nervous. The teachers were a little nervous. But what made it work was a commitment from my special ed staff, hours of putting in the support work, working closely with our general ed teachers to show that we were ready to support these kids because they need the support. That's why they've been identified. And what's happened is now we're into the beginning of March, so we're not, it doesn't look like it looked on the first day of school. We, we are kind of trying to find that happy medium. Some kids, what we've realized is it isn't a behavior that is the gap of kids not being successful in a general ed setting. It is their academics. And so for these kids who have been not participating and have access to the rigorous content that they would get in a general ed classroom, they themselves, some of them, have selected to be, to remain more in a self-contained setting. What we got after first month of school was kids saying, I need to be somewhere else. And so we've been trying to modify our schedules so that kids have more of a fluid. They're coming and going. And what has changed, what does definitely look, continue to this day, is that the rigor and what kids are working on with their special ed teachers when they're not in the general ed setting is the core content that they would have been. They're bringing the work with them out of the classroom to work with their special education teachers. And we have some incredible success stories of kids who you would never have guessed. Last year, when I met them the first time, they wouldn't talk to, to me, or they were insolent. They were difficult, all those descriptors that you can get for kids who have been identified for special ed with behavior issues. Some of them, as I said, have not, were not in general ed settings. I, it's absolutely amazing. For some of these kids, you would not know if you went into one of the classrooms and tried to identify who those kids were. And I have to share, we have a fifth grader. He was at lunch today, and I said, come up here, I have to tell you something. And he, he's a black boy who does not initiate conversation with adults. Last year, he spent no time other than PE, art, or library with fourth graders. He has been fully included with his fifth-grade class 100% since September 5th, whenever we started. But I told him, I said, I'm going to tell a story tonight to a group of people. They're called the school board, and they are in charge of the whole school. And I kind of described what I was going to be telling you. And I said at the end, I said, does that remind you of anybody? And he said, me? And I said, yes. And I, and he was just beaming, and he's, you know. It was, it was one of the most powerful conversations that I'd had. And he was, I told him, I'm so proud of you, and you are not the same kid that you were last year. So, and he was, he went away with a smile on his face. And this is a kid who's, I see him smile with his peers, but I do not see him smile with adults. And that's, that's not the exception. We've had several cases like that where kids are just... So it's good because they're getting good, rigorous content, but it's also good because it has changed who they are and how they interact. But you need to know that it is a lot of work. And it could only happen because we do have an incredibly committed special education staff. We're using all of the pairs that we were staffed with. And the teachers are making it work because they're getting, we have multiple adults that are coming into the classroom. And we're flexible enough to realize that when it doesn't work for some kids, that that's okay, that they're not ready, and that we have to give them time. But hopefully, if we're able to continue to do this over time, we'll have more kids ready to be on track when they leave us and go on to Madison or wherever they go. So it's, it's pretty exciting stuff.
So we have about 12 more minutes for the staff part of the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Greg Wallach, Regional Administrator for High Schools. And part of my assignment is to support the work at Madison. Tonight is my pleasure to introduce Petra Cowan, who is in her third year as Madison Principal. She spoke with you a few weeks ago about the encouraging news regarding Madison's improved graduation rate. Tonight, she will share with you some of the work at the school sponsored in part by their School Improvement Grant. And like Sarah, she'll also talk about the emerging alignment of special education thinking in the cluster. Petra?
Thank you. I'm honored to speak with you tonight about Madison High School, its staff, students, community, and its journey. Madison has not always had an easy time of it. Almost eight years ago, the school divided into three separate communities in an effort to boost faltering student achievement. After years of struggle, Madison once again became a comprehensive high school, and the community had to endure more change and a revolving door of administration. The advent of our Federal School Improvement Grant brought renewed focus, resources, and hope of stability. Our teachers have done phenomenal work that will make an impact on students for years to come. They are designing and implementing focus supports to ensure that students are gaining the skills they need to be successful in their courses. They're mapping curriculum with the focus on literacy and the demands of the Common Core curriculum. They are working together to study how students are achieving and discussing changes that can be made to improve outcomes. Teachers are working daily in classrooms with extracurriculars and after-school to help all of our students meet our mission to be ready for college and career. The conversations we have as a staff are focused on helping all students succeed at Madison with an eye on equity at the core. Our diverse student body is truly amazing. They have been participating in leadership opportunities, casting metal, creating APR portfolios, singing, drumming, participating in athletics, competing in poetry slams, and putting on plays, just to name a handful of things. Just a couple weeks ago, I had the pleasure of watching a group of our African students put on an African cultural night that brought in many families and others from the community, as yet another example of the things that our kids do. As a system, we've improved how we wrap around students and provide them with opportunities from our algebra support classes to our advanced placement calculus. We've offered our students summer options, support beyond the school day, increased family engagement, and social-emotional supports. We've brought in many community partners to provide culturally-specific support and leadership opportunities. We've looked closely at our special education service delivery model to keep more students in general education classes and moving away from the days of the modified diploma. We've begun a path of increased engagement with our feeder schools. We've worked specifically with Roseway Heights, as you have just heard, and also have begun feeder-wide conversations about math and science articulation. Our movement forward has been inspiring. We've increased our reading scores and algebra success rates by more than 10%. The last two years have seen a 16% increase in graduation rates to reach 71%, which has exceeded the state average. And the feeders are a big part of that, so, you know, that's all these guys. Our Latino and Asian students have exceeded our white and total graduation rates. In addition to academic gains, we've seen a 5% increase in attendance, which we know is vital for success. Recently, we learned that we're being asked to apply for a school change award given by the National Principals Leadership Institute that recognizes schools for their journey to transformation. Like all schools, we have challenges that we're facing. Not all of our students are graduating ready for college. And until we see that day, we won't rest. The budgets get tighter and tighter every year. The requirements keep increasing. I'll give you an example, the essential skills graduation requirement. Without increased resources, schools such as Madison are faced with adding support classes to help students meet those requirements, an intense amount of teacher time to score work samples and track completion. The advent of the math essential skills will add an intensity to this work that will be extremely challenging. Madison has one more year of our grant ahead of us. Because of the added resources, we've been able to provide teachers with extended hours to work on curriculum and interventions, targeted professional development, and summer curricula work. Students are able to access extended opportunities in the summer and during the year. Staff such as- such as instructional specialists, a student support specialist, a family engagement coordinator, and a social services coordinator have made incredible impact on both students and families. While we are building systems, instructional practices, and curriculum that will carry far beyond the grant, there are many aspects of our work that are tied directly to dollars. Given the ever-shrinking budgets, we know that there will be a great deal of loss after next year, and I worry about the impact. We are a strong community, however, and our diversity is central to that strength and who we are. We'll continue to strive and provide our students with the opportunities and the education that they deserve. Thanks.
If that concludes the staff part, then we have an opportunity to make any comments or questions that we might have for all of our principals. Thank you for the presentation. I know it's a lot to get going, and it's great, great to hear all the work that you guys are doing. Wish we had time to have everybody line up and talk about the work, because I've been to a number of your schools. In fact, have I been to every one of the, I've been to every one of these schools. And I, as I walk through and get to talk to hear about the work that you're all doing, it's, it's just exciting and engaging, so.
I'll mention a couple things. I'm really excited, I think. I love the name "The Rig", I do. That's, that's cool. But I also loved the comment that you made around not being able to predict things by race. I think that's a very exciting prospect, and I think when we look at the real intentions, the real purpose behind our equity work, that's what it is, not being able to predict either success or failure, benchmarks or not benchmarks by race. Right now, we can, a lot, and, but I'm looking forward to a time when we can't. So I also really appreciate your, your comments around restorative justice, and this is a reoccurring theme that we've heard, particularly around discipline in our schools, and I'm wondering from the other administrators, who else has taken on this concept of restorative justice and how you're working with students who are struggling with discipline issues? And how has that worked for your schools? Or is this one example maybe within this cluster, but I'd love to hear what others have experienced?
We've begun that work at Madison. We had some of our staff members and students trained in restorative justice and what that means at the high school level, but this is really our first year. So primarily, we've been using it to handle issues between students and mitigate some of those differences that come up. But the next step is to really be looking how that, how that connects between staff members and students.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to try and speak to you, I have a little real cough thing going on. So we have, I'm trained in restorative justice too, so it's something that I'm bringing, trying to bring my viewpoint on it to Roseway Heights. Hope to be able to work with Madison and have a continuation. We have a person from the restorative justice working with our seventh and eighth graders right now, and they are doing some project work with the students. And the hope is that in the spring, they'll be presenting the project, to which we'll invite you to come and see. And then also, they'll be presenting to the staff and to the community, and it's something that we want to see grow at Roseway Heights, and then continue on as they, you know, be able to participate in it when they go on up to Madison. So I'm trying to use that approach with our discipline. We had a very wonderful, a little event happen two weeks ago where a student had done some harm to some of her classmates, and we were able to do a restorative circle. And it happened to be with a special ed, a student that has an IP, and it was pretty miraculous to be in the classroom and see how she interacted with her students, with her peers, and how they interacted with her. And the whole problem was solved just amongst the students being in the circle, rather than the adults having anything to do with it. So that's just one example of what's happening at Roseway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Am I assuming, you mentioned, Kristi, about restorative justice, having worked with Resolutions Northwest, are those people, are those folks getting grants to support you and your work? So is this a funding issue primarily that's keeping the other schools?
I use SIG dollars.
SIG, okay.
You have a three-year grant.
Three-year grant. Is that keeping some of the others out of it? I'm seeing some nods of, yeah, and I see a, hmm. Ms. Fox, would you?
I'm thinking, it's on, it's always on, okay. I'm thinking, listening to this, that it's a very attractive direction for our school to go. So I was taking notes while Kristi was talking, and we'll give that organization a call and see if there's any other grants on the horizon, because it's, we certainly have, when, when children do things that are infractions against other kids, we certainly understand that punishment is not the most effective way to approach things, and so we, we want to do things that will help guide their practice in the future. So I, I think we're not going to let funding be a, an obstacle to us.
Other thoughts, questions?
Thank you all for your presentations. They were great. One of the questions that I've asked each cluster as they come in is if you, as a school principal, had an extra $100,000 or so.
Not you personally, in your building's budget.
Not for you, for your buildings, but we are in budget season, and this is the time when we look at priorities. If you had an extra amount of money, I'd love to hear how you might use that, whether it be a person, a program, or what it might be.
For me, for us at Roseway Heights, one of the challenges, and I think you've kind of alluded to it here, is dollars for professional development for our teachers. I mean, I feel like staffing is okay, I could always use more to make class sizes smaller and that, but where we don't generally have additional flexibility is around deep and meaningful professional development, where I could bring in experts, where I could pay teachers for their time. It's hard to do anything meaningful two hours after school when they're already tired. And the late openings, and I appreciate them, but they aren't fully a two hours because we got to get done so they can get ready to greet the kids. So having that money to pay teachers to have, you know, time away from the building to really dig deep into their practices would be powerful. So that would be exciting.
Anyone else?
I would say that for me at Scott, we have a new immersion program this year and a new kindergarten team. My three immersion teachers went out and did home visits, and it made the world of difference to how bonded the families are to Scott and how enthusiastic they are about attending Scott. Ideally, I would like to have enough money to pay teachers for their time and their gas for when they go to do home visits. It's an hour per child. We had 100 children register, so that's 100 hours. And I would love to be able to do that for kinder and first grade, so that those first grade parents are still enthusiastic about the program and continuing on with immersion so that we don't experience any attrition. But that, that does take funding. And if we're going to want a really solid immersion program, paying my immersion teachers to come in maybe a week before everyone else to do some planning around implementation, curriculum, and whatever else they might think they need to use their time for.
I would fully fund our school to appropriately support the number of students that we have who are affected by race and poverty. We're funded with a funding formula that's based on equal rather than equitable, and it is affecting us greatly. It's affecting what we can provide to our students and what we can provide to our staff, and it's, it's huge. I had to pay for a counselor and had to pay a lot of extra money to get basic supports to our kids, and we do not have an assistant principal this year, even though I had 24 evaluations to do. So it's, it's a big need.
This is really helpful to hear, so.
She took my answer. But in addition, I would like to, I would say specifically money with professional development and equitable funding to support our students and families in need would be specific to peer observations. Right now, we're fortunately that we build that within the systems and the framework at a very teeny, tiny, very feeble rate. But the, the impact of when teachers can break down those walls and go across the hall, not to other, not to other buildings or someone else coming in, but actually seeing what your colleagues do with your children, the same kids that you know, has been really powerful, and to do more of that in addition to what my colleagues have said.
I would, I would say, support staff, we've seen cuts to Title I. We're anticipating cuts this year to Title I, and we've seen the power of really pushing double-dip reading instruction at the primary grades and how that has a payoff later down the road for the upper grades where they're not spending as much time teaching reading as teaching, you know, whatever subject it is. I'm nervous about the loss of full-day kindergarten, so, and I know $100,000 wouldn't cover that for a building the size of Harrison Park, but those are the two things I've mentioned, and thanks for the question.
I think my colleagues have covered it, but one of the things that's been most powerful for us at Creative Science School was creating opportunities for teachers to work together, to share their practices, to support each other, so peer observations, and having additional time for them to engage in some of the important questions to grapple with would probably be high on my list.
That's awesome. Good. Thank you so much.
First of all, thank you all for being here. I always love hearing what's happening at schools, love to hear about what's happening at Madison and that great success you guys are having. I, in going through the milestone data that we were provided for each school, Scott kind of jumped out at me here, and I am wondering if, because your scores dropped pretty significantly last year, and I'm wondering if you've identified why that is, I'm sure you probably have, and what, what's in place to help those scores improve this year?
So at, at Scott, we do have a school improvement specialist, and one of the things that is now pretty systemic is that teachers meet in data teams once a week. So every single week, they get time to sit with our school improvement specialist and review the data and see what, which kids are making progress, which kids are not, and what are the interventions that we need to support the children. We have a data room, so our school improvement specialist has all of the data on the wall. She's put identifiers on the cards so we can see race, so we can see which kids are second language learners, which kids are special ed identified, and we can look at the patterns. We, we have, because of the cuts, we have lost our reading specialist, so that definitely has an impact. Right now, we have, we have some reading support for our middle schoolers, and we have one instructional assistant that helps to support reading instruction. Right now, we're also working with the entire staff to work with our middle schoolers so that we can sit down and have conversations with the children of, in terms of, this is where you were last year, this is the growth target that has been set for you, these are what your grades look like in the core content areas, this is your attendance, giving them, each, giving each child an individual snapshot of themselves and what they can do to demonstrate some growth. All of our middle schoolers also set reading and math goals for the third quarter. They had their, we sat with them in small groups and they had some of their performance in front of them, and they set goals, and we're going to check in with them at the end of the third quarter to see how they're progressing. Our K-1, 2 teams are definitely very data-driven, very data-oriented, and they're making a lot of decisions based on what they're looking at their data. We do have some areas that we're still working on, but that's some of what we're, we're working on right now.
So did you determine what the issue was that caused this drop last year? I guess that's the one question.
I know that in math...
It's just third grade milestone reading.
Third grade milestone reading. There's, I, I don't know.
Lee had a similar thing, by the way, also in terms of reading. A drop, so I don't know.
Yeah. Not as significant perhaps, but it was a drop also in terms of reading.
I, I think what I will say with that, with third grade reading, is that I had, as a leader of that building, significant concerns about instructional practice in those two rooms, and I think that's about all.
Thank you.
So I'll add in, I just really appreciate all the presentations and information. I so love these nights when principals come and share. Just really appreciate, in addition to the focus on the discipline improvements, that, on the special ed inclusionary practices and that you highlighted that, so maybe, maybe a question for Carl or some of the other principals who may be doing similar work, just in terms of how we're making this more of the culture and the practice in the district as a whole? Are we sort of piloting it at certain schools? Because I'm hearing from Sarah that it's very intensive transition to make, but one that really has huge payoffs for, for students. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more about systemically where we're going with this, because it's very exciting to hear.
Yeah, so specifically with the, the work that's being done at Roseway and Madison, we are looking at some other schools to do the same.
Mr. Logan, can I actually have you come? The cameras can't reach quite that far up, so. Want our television audience to be able to see who's speaking. Thank you.
So we are looking to replicate the work that, the special ed work that we're doing at Roseway and Madison at some of our other schools. And so we've just started that conversation with the special ed department and the administrators at those schools.
This is, I mean, it's just something that we need to continue to expand. I mean, just part of the whole culture, shifting the culture in the district so that everyone is focused on all the students in special ed. It's part of that, and then, and reducing the exclusionary practices. So it's just really exciting to hear a specific example of how that works and, and down to the level of an individual child's success is really, really inspiring and really appreciated. So thanks for what you're doing.
Well, can I, I'm going to actually follow up on that real quick with a quick question, because my understanding is Roseway Heights has quite, quite a broad spectrum of the continuum. So don't you have kindergarten through eighth grade? I mean, it's the, it's the full spectrum at your, at your site. And I think of another recent example of where it's been working well was at Woodlawn, which also has this big spectrum. And so I just, I'm curious if there's anybody that has any information about whether that's a preferred model or a better model or a worse model? Or thoughts on it, whatever you were going to share before I, before I got to the end of my question.
I don't know, I can say that we have a K-5 model, we have a K-2 class and a 3-5, and ours is a communication behavior class. And so our model worked really well with the K-2 system because it is the general education and the special education teachers working in, in partnership, where we're looking at each individual student and, and able to use that team effectively. We just last year moved that really successfully into our 3-5. And again, I can't stress, it's not, it's not with our special ed folks, it's about the culture of the school and building that these are our students, and how we approach that is important. And so it's everybody working as a team for the success of all students who attend our school. And I can see that at Lee, because we say goodbye at fifth grade, after fifth grade, yet we're a K-8, we could really, it would be a beautiful thing if we could go all the way up to eight, but I'm not going to say it's a pro or a con. thing if we could go all the way up to eight. But I'm not going to say it's a pro or a con, but it is about building the culture and having everyone on board, working together, and being open to, hey, what's going on and how can I help?
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, this is a question I, I guess more in terms of, for Creative Science. I mean, because, I mean, the, the achievement, I think, looks well. What was troubling, and this is something that, that I think I have raised before, is, is the, the composition of, of Creative Science in regards to the lack of, from my perspective, of course, not reflective of the school district's student population. And so, I'm, I'm wondering what specific steps are being taken to try to provide this access to the school, to a diverse student population.
It's, it's a significant issue and an ongoing challenge. Just to give you an example, last year, we had 150 applicants for our 50 kindergarten slots. Of those 50 slots, 27 went automatically to siblings. So, effectively, we had 132 applicants for, 133 applicants for 23 slots. So, we're fortunate to have a Head Start program located on site. And we work with the Head Start staff and Head Start families to encourage Head Start families to apply. This year, I attended three of their parent meetings intended for families that are transitioning to kindergarten and have communicated to those families that they would not be required to attend one of our information nights, but that the meeting that I attended with them would suffice as the, as the information night meeting, where I explained to them a little bit about our school, the application process, and definitely encouraged them to, to apply. But the reality is that our school is predominantly white and a number of our families of color who see our students and see our families, who perhaps attend one of the information nights, have some concerns, have had some hesitations of whether or not this is a place for them and a, and a home for them. So, I think that this is something that we need to look at. I think it's a systemic, systemic issue. I wonder if the application process currently in place is aligned with our equity policy, which really calls out issues of race. We have a colorblind system in place now, and I'm not sure that the results that we're getting are the results that are, that are intended. But I think it's a systemic issue that we will definitely need support to, to fully address.
Now, I'd like to say that the focus option principals have raised this question, have met about this. And actually, Mr. Haris Dikas actually wrote a, a paper on it, on, so it's been, it's been a, it's been a focus of his and something that's been on his pulse on how to make our system more equitable for, for all students. Because like he said, I'm not sure. I know the intended consequences of our current policies are not aligned with our racial equity policy.
So. A very simple solution, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Would be to reserve a certain percentage of incoming kindergarten slots for families from the Head Start program, in much the same way that colleges, universities perhaps have a certain number of slots reserved for students who come from a college preparatory program like Upper Bound or, or College Rep. I think that our focus option schools, given their clarity, given the richness of their curriculum, have a real function and purpose to serve in closing the achievement gap. And I'm not sure that we're doing that currently, given that we are not serving those students who tend to struggle in, 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 in school. And, and so, I think we have a real opportunity that we're not harnessing fully.
So, I mean, my assumption would be that this would be part of the updating of the transfer policy as well, right? I mean, focus options as part of that. Because I, I mean, you articulated really well. This is, this is an issue that it was, I think it's, where it's Judy Brennan was talking about, it started originally with one person. It's evolved, and now it's not in line with our equity policy. So, appreciate that.
Right. And, and again, I mean, particularly as, as you mentioned, the sibling preference. I think that, that it's.
Right.
Also, I mean, I know that, that within the state, in regards to charter schools, there's certain, you know, requirements there. But in regards to whether the district institutes those things, which in essence becomes an affirmative action.
Right. And the sibling preference.
Plan for, for white families, it's, you know, it needs to be recognized.
Right. And the sibling preference, in my mind, makes absolute sense. And it's an accommodation that we're making. And I think in the same way, we should be making accommodations for, in other cases as well.
Can I ask another question about your enrollment in general? It looks like you have 388 kids, which is small for a K8. And yet, it doesn't sound like we opened up more slots for you to have more kids.
Our mid-level program is growing. Right now, we have 60 students in grades six, seven, and eight. And in the next three years, we will be up to 180.
Okay.
This year, for the first year, we have two sixth grade classrooms. Next year, those students will move into seventh grade. Sorry, we have two fifth grade classrooms. Next year, they'll move into sixth, seventh, and eighth. So, we will max out with, at two classrooms per grade level.
Great.
So, we'll be closer to 450, 480.
Great. Thanks.
Harrison Park question. Just to start with the other inspector in terms of size and just, you know, I think we've expressed at one point or another, just concern about the large size and the difficulties that that might bring and/or opportunities because of funding and other things. And you've had a pretty huge jump in, in scores in the last year or two. So, I was just interested in general thoughts about, is, is the large size, is how well, is that working? I mean, we're grappling continually with the size issues, so.
Assume you're talking to me.
We are very large and we're growing. And we have huge space issues. So, there's, there's a tendency to get overwhelmed by the size of it, but I, I think we're working with it as long as we can figure out a way to solve our space issues, which I know Gretchen Hollins is, is taking a look at and, and doing some planning around. In terms of the big jump, and I wanted to say this when you talked about Scott, that was a great jump on the third grade reading score. And, but you have to remember, you're comparing two different groups of, of students.
Right, right, right.
And that's really easy to forget. So, you're comparing apples and oranges a little bit. Also, the, two years ago, that was the first year they raised the, raised the benchmark level for reading. And I think that took some adjustment. That being said, I think our third grade team is doing some really great things, especially around some sheltered instruction with their third graders and with the number of ESL students that we have. That's just crucial. And that's something we need to do school-wide. But in terms of the size, we, we've got lots of issues around size. We have issues around the, we're the largest ESL school in the district, larger than any high school in terms of numbers of students enrolled. But it also brings us a lot of support programs. One of the issues is coordinating all the different things that are going on in the building. So, if we can get enough space for all of the different classrooms and programs that we have, you know, it's not too overwhelming.
But it sounds as if, I mean, ideally, you would, we're just trying to, you know, continually grappling with this. And it just seems that Harrison Park is kind of an outlier along with Alameda in terms of size. So, it sounds as if in the ideal world, that you would maybe not be quite so large.
Right. Because currently, we have four kindergarten and four first grade. And we're probably going to be four, four, and four, with kindergarten, first grade, and second grade next year. And we have very large class sizes at fourth and fifth grade as well. So, we are bursting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our time is almost up. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just want a quick question, just to Harrison Park. Given the, you know, what you mentioned in regards to the, the large ESL population, whether at, at some point, I mean, I know you're relatively new as a, as a, as a principal there, any discussion around the, the starting of dual language immersion programs, given that you have, you know, a diverse population there?
So, the problem there is we have 43 languages in our building. So, what language, what language would we choose?
You got at least, I think, 16% Latino students there.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So, I guess my take is that's, that's a possibility. But I really feel like what we need to do is just improve our instructional program, improve our ESL program for our students. And as a principal, just looking at where we are right now, taking on that sort of challenge of developing a dual immersion program, just seems a little too daunting for us at this point.
Thank you.
Okay.
No. So, Petra, I want to ask you a question, if I could. So, first of all, I mostly want to highlight the fact that you had a 16% increase in graduation rates over the last three years, which is just amazing. I know you had a federal school improvement grant. So, again, it's sort of a takeoff on my first question. When you think about what happened at Madison over the last three years, can you talk to us about the key strategies or key improvements that helped increase your graduation rate that much?
Well, you know, when you first asked that question about if you had $100,000, what would you do with it? I was like, well, I have a million dollars a year for three years. So, and that, it's been, it's been incredible for our community. Some of the primary things that I think really make a difference are, and I believe I spoke a little bit to this last time I spoke before you, but multiple pathways and opportunities for kids. So, if they don't quite make it in a course, in a semester, then we offer other chances on Saturdays and in the summer after school in order to meet those learning targets and earn that credit. Sometimes kids need more than one opportunity. And I think that has made a big difference. The ability for teachers to spend a great deal of time working together on curriculum and instruction is very important. The amount of planning that teachers have done over the summer, the workshops that they have gone to in order to improve their practices make a big impact on what happens every single day in every single classroom. The support staff that we brought into the building to help students, to help teachers and families. I think about the, the social services coordinator, all the home visits he does, all the connecting students and families to support services, the, the networking he does with community agencies to, to help our students, the instructional specialists that have really helped teachers to do a lot of that coordinated work that we're talking about and provide really high-quality embedded professional development. The student support specialists that we have that, you know, tracking everything that's happening with our students in the ninth grade and helping to organize all those efforts to, to catch kids on the front end instead of, you know, doing an autopsy on the back end. So, it, it takes a great deal. I mean, the, our community does have challenges. And, you know, our, our students need, you know, some of our students need a great deal of support. And you can't do that on the same kind of budget that everybody else has and the same kind of staffing formula that everybody else has. As I know that the, the chances of me having the kind of staff that will support a social services coordinator, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are probably pretty slim unless things really change in the next year. Now, I'm really happy to hear that it looks like we'll kind of stabilize, you know, crossing my fingers, stabilize for this next year. But, you know, I do worry about losing those extra supports because it provides people the space to, to really build some momentum.
That's great. Thank you very much.
So, from your lips to the governor's ears.
Speaking of the governor, he's going to join us, March 18th. I want to thank all, all the staff members that went into, to making this presentation and all the work that you guys are doing every single day. We're going to take a, a moment to invite all the principals and regional administrators up in front, in front of the dais for a photo so that we all have a chance. Sorry, we didn't warn you. I hope you wore something. That's okay. I know you probably just came from your buildings. But, and then shortly after that, or right after that, we'll take a five-minute recess, so. We're going to move on to our next order of business, the budget 2013-2014 with program overview. Beginning tonight and during our next few meetings, the board will receive several program overviews before the superintendent presents her proposed 2013-2014 budget. Tonight, we're going to receive information on dual language immersion, career and technical education, and online learning. We're also going to get an update on a legislative newly released budget from the co-chairs. But Superintendent Smith, can you introduce this item?
So, I'm going to ask, before we go into the content areas, I'm going to ask our deputy chief financial officer, David Wine, to come up and give us an update on the co-chairs' budget, which was released today.
This is not this co-chair's budget, so.
Right, no, I will be.
The legislative co-chairs' budget.
I will be very clear about who it was who proposed the budget. Thank you, Co-Chair Gonzalez. So, co-chairs, board members, Superintendent Smith, I was thinking about what I was, how I was going to frame this tonight. And I realized that I have been sitting on one side of this podium or another for 10 years, talking about funding for K-12 education in this state. And tonight marks the first time in 10 years that I have been able to say publicly that someone in a position of authority in this state is proposing to increase the share of the state budget allocated to K-12. The six-point-seven-five-billion-dollar level is one that, that we statewide have characterized as stability. For Portland Public Schools, a funding level of six-point-seven-five billion would finally bring some stability to our budget, especially in comparison to the last four years. After many years of reductions in school staffing levels, which have resulted in higher class sizes, fewer programs and electives, at that, at the funding level represented in the co-chair's budget, we might be able to begin to make modest targeted investments in some schools to support our most undeserved students. I want to be clear, at six-point-seven-five billion dollars, we're not fat-rich-and-happy by any stretch of the imagination, but it is a level at which we believe, as we move through this budget development process, that we might be able to see some, as I say, targeted investments in ways that are important for our most undeserved students. And it really does, it, it probably is a, a budget where we are not looking at across-the-board reductions. So, we're excited about that. There's a long way to go yet because both the six-point-five-five-billion-dollar appropriation has to be, you know, approved by the whole legislature, and there's some heavy lifting in terms of the changes to the PERS system. But I think over the next few weeks, as we move through budget development, we will be able, we will be looking to, and we'll be able to paint a picture of the difference between six-point-seven-five and six-point-five-five in terms of what that means for kids in our schools, and we will, we will do that both with you and with our legislators. So, that's, that's where we are with the state budget. Unless anyone has questions on that?
Good, thank you very much for that. And our first content presentation today will be about career technical education, and we have Tripp Goodall, our Director of High Schools, and Jeanne Yurkovich, the Senior Manager of Career Pathways and Career and Technical Education, who will walk us through. And we've got about half an hour total for this presentation, so until presentation and questions and answers from the board.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, board members, co-chairs. Tonight, we hope to provide you with a brief update on career learning and career and technical education. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jeanne Yurkovich, our Senior Manager of Career Pathways and CTE. As you know, she has been really the champion of this work for the last seven, for the last eight years, and so I'm really, I can't say enough about her work, and I'll give it to Jeanne.
Great. Thank you, and I'm, I'm excited to talk with you tonight about career learning and career and technical ed and kind of differentiate for you what that means. Just to remind you that we do have a career learning framework, so we've had this framework in place for a while. Awareness for grades seven through nine, where they become aware of their learning styles, exploration for grades nine through twelve, and that would be for all students. The idea would be that they would have an opportunity to learn about all aspects of different industries, it's broadly based, they would have applications in the real world, and that we would be looking and targeting high-wage, high-demand career fields. When we move into preparation, we're talking about grades eleven and twelve, and really that is more like, like a Benson where students are diving deep. They are working in the same areas, high-wage, high-demand, but the additional piece is that they would have an opportunity to earn either college credit or certification or some kind of credential. This slide is really intended to give you the, the sense, the difference between what we're talking about in terms of career learning and CTE. So, for the career learning piece, it's really our system, that exploration piece, connecting that real-world application to the classroom. We want to make sure that we're introducing 21st century skills, and it really is part of the personalized learning diploma requirements that are required by the state of Oregon. For CTE, all of those pieces are in place, but the one major difference is that our CTE programs are state-approved programs of study, so they have to go through a process for the state of Oregon. Again, in high-wage, high-demand skill areas, they must have advisory committees, people from industry that are tied specifically to those program areas. They must have what they call, at the state, technical skill assessment, so students are tested on what they're learning in that particular area, and it's a test that needs to be approved by the state of Oregon. There must be post-secondary connections and opportunities for students to earn college credit and credentials. This is the work of our career coordinators. Last year was the first year we had career coordinators on all of our high school campuses. They are, for the most part, point seven in all of our buildings. There are a couple places where the principal has opted to increase that FTE, but you can see that they're, they are kind of the, the linchpin holding all of these pieces together. They are in charge of managing the diploma requirements around personalized learning. They are responsible for facilitating and developing career learning experiences for our students and the wide range from guest speakers to internships. They are responsible for developing partnerships in their own community as well as in the broader Portland area. They work with staff, teachers, and counselors to implement and develop the system. They are also part of our district career coordinators team, so we work together and to ensure that we have common protocols and procedures across the district. And then there's this other piece, other duties, and in many cases, in order for them to have a full-time job, some of our career coordinators have picked up other things in their buildings that are pretty time-consuming. In one, one case, we have a career coordinator who's the testing coordinator as, as well. So, there's a lot of things going on in our buildings, but most importantly, they are the primary contact for career learning. So, when people want to work with our schools, when they want to partner with our, our schools and offer opportunities for students, the career coordinator is where industry and business partners and community members are, are directed. Some of the highlights from last year, the personalized learning diploma requirements. Last year, the class of 2012 was the first class that was required to have completed and documented one career learning experience, and so the career coordinators were responsible for that, and our, our class of 2012 did meet those requirements. We have increased partnerships and career learning activities, we have more collaboration with our teachers and counselors. Most of our schools have career centers, and those are becoming the hubs, the center for all of this work. Many of our schools are offering workshops within the careers, career centers. So, for example, at Grant, Walsh Construction is working, doing some things around construction, and they're doing workshops in the career center after school. And we have had increased numbers of students participating in our career learning experiences. So, this is for district-wide events, it does not include numbers of things specifically that were generated at the school, but you can see that we have increased since 2009. We are increasing the number of students who are participating, and the number for this year is only through February of 2013, and we still have a, well, ways to go. So, my expectation is that we will exceed what we did last year. I want to talk a little bit about our CTE programs of study, and you can see that we have programs in many of our schools, but not all of our schools have the state-approved CTE programs in their buildings. At Alliance, you can see that we, they have four programs of study. Benson, which is our flagship CTE school, they have six. Cleveland has one in marketing. Franklin has a pretty robust business program and construction and manufacturing, and Madison Wilson each have one program as well. Terms of Perkins funding, we receive federal Perkins Grant funds for our CTE programs of study, and you can see over the last five years that the funds have declined considerably. So, at, from a high of, in 2009-10, we're, we're about two-hundred thousand dollars less last, this particular school year, and the expectation is that it will be less again next year as well. The other thing about Perkins funding is as we, if we add additional state-approved programs of study, the pot doesn't get any bigger, it means that the pieces of the pie get smaller as we distribute it among our schools. Community engagement has been a really important piece of this work, and we continue to partner with the Portland Workforce Alliance and Kevin Jean Scale, and enabling us to participate, our students to participate in some pretty phenomenal Career Day events. Tomorrow, there's a Career Day event at Wyden and Kennedy. We've added new career events this year. We also are partnering with Work Systems for the BizConnect Regional Employer Database System, which is a way to connect employers and students and teachers for career learning opportunities. We are part of the Tri-County School Career Consortium, and again, we partner with folks in Washington County, Clackamas County, East Multnomah County, to develop Career Day events. So, our students are having opportunities that are being developed by someone maybe out in Hillsborough, and they're opening the, the slots up to our kids as well. We've partnered last year with Mayor Adams, actually, for the last two years, on a Speakers' Bureau with the city. We've done presentations with OWAMI, and I think significantly this year, the equity and purchasing and contracting policy that the board passed is another way that we're engaging business partners in this work. Part of the directives tied to that would be that at a minimum, an employer would have to register and offer opportunities in BizConnect, and at a higher dollar level, they would be required to either participate or sponsor at the Northwest Youth Careers Expo. So, again, broadening the number of opportunities available for our students. Our schools are developing partnerships, I think I mentioned earlier, in their own communities, and then last year, we also had the District Pathways Advisory Council, and there were about forty members from industry and post-secondary and the community who were helping us look at this work. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tripp.
You know, last year, my first year, that was a great opportunity for me to, to be introduced to a number of really dedicated people from private sector and higher ed, really interested in partnering with PPS around this whole issue of career technical education and career pathways. We met throughout last year, it was, there was a great culminating event at Vestas here in town, where the mayor came and a number of people, principals, business people alike, talking about how can we partner in a stronger way as we move forward. The, the group made some recommendations that we've listed here about investment, and even in times of scarcity, a conversation about investment is a good thing. So, we're looking at high-quality career programming in all of our schools, and again, when we look at high school system design, that was something that, that was included. Infrastructure at both the district and the school levels, and then certainly strong partnerships with local employers, post-secondary partners, community groups, and individuals. The conversation with PCC around dual enrollment, dual credit. This was an opportunity, again, for a, a really broad spectrum of people to meet on this council. The four things that they really focused on, a common vision for improving educational opportunities through this work, accountability for results, students graduating ready for a variety of post-secondary and career aspirations, commitment, again, to establish and expand quality career learning in our buildings, and responsibility for designing, implementing, sustaining high-quality programs and systems to support them. So, a real systems approach. We included a couple slides here at the end about, there's a national conversation taking place right now. This is from Arnie Duncan, Secretary of Education, really, again, emphasizing this isn't a time to, to really kind of tinker with it, as he says, but really transform it. And I know the last two State of the Union addresses, President Obama spent a considerable amount of time talking about career technical education as well, so there's certainly a national spotlight. And then our own Oregon Education Investment Board has four strategic investment strategies. Oregon Early Reading Initiative, developing a representative core of professional educators, and then the two that connect with us here, connecting students to the world of work and guidance and support for post-secondary aspirations. When we look at where we're at today in terms of elective courses, Jeanne did a great job this year, early on, we talked about, let's take a look at what electives do we currently offer in our schools, and when you see how they've been put on this bar graph with regard to the national career clusters, it gives you an idea of where our electives currently are. It's a great opportunity right now to examine ways for us to increase electives in pathway areas, and then certainly to talk about, how do we balance existing FTE that, that we have in our high school system? Maybe we start looking at semester-long courses as opposed to year-long courses, so we can provide more opportunities for students to take electives. So, finishing up, we're looking at some priorities for 2013 and beyond. Currently, we have, our career coordinators are point seven, and, and we think that they would be able to do more at, at a one-point-O FTE, managing the increased personal learning requirements that are, again, graduation requirements, improving and increasing the awareness, exploration, and preparation opportunities in all of our high schools, continue to expand the industry-community partnerships, and then support implementation of the district's equity in purchasing and contracting policy and attaching that to our career, career learning goals. So, continuing, determine criteria and metrics for measuring success, establishing district guidelines for assessing our electives, which, again, we've started, taking a look at our pathways and CTE programming, identify and further develop career interest electives and CTE programming across the high school system, identify priority programming areas for investment and expansion, and develop professional development opportunities for school teams. Budget implications, this is the last slide, talks really about, again, we know that increasing FTE will be tied to some salary increase. We currently have some contracted services that will hopefully be able to continue and potentially expand upon support for facilitating our career-related learning experiences for our kids, and that means getting subs in the classroom so teachers can participate in that event, buses to transport kids to those opportunities, and then professional development for our staff. It's interesting when we, to close, when Jeanne talked about the difference between career-related opportunities and CT. CT is part of Perkins Grant, it's pretty formal in terms of how those programs operate in our buildings, but I think all of us would hope that many of the classes that we currently offered, offer in our schools are attached to careers and post-secondary education. That's obviously one of our big goals. So, examining our elective program to expand in that area, I think, is a, a direction that, that we certainly would like to, to move toward.
Thank you. With that, do we have questions? Of course we have questions. Who would like to start with questions or comments?
I have a whole variety of questions, thanks for the presentation. So, maybe I'll start with one or two and then see if people pick up the others. Do you have any sense at this point of what our Perkins Grant funding will be for next year?
The state hasn't said, but the expectation would be probably, I don't know, eight to ten percent less, perhaps?
So, less again?
But we don't, less again.
And, and there's also talk that it may eventually become a, a...
Competitive.
A competitive grant, which it has not been for, forever, so...
You know, I think my big question would be about the state-approved CTE programs by schools. So, we have, it looks like five schools where we don't have those programs at all. Grant, Jefferson, Lincoln, MLC, and Roosevelt. So, is your, and I know that that's an objective, is to get those programs in each of the schools, or at least that's what I understand. Do you have a sense of what we're looking at for next year?
So, there's been conversation with Grant, with their magazine and their partnership with Hollywood Theater, so we're, we're having that conversation. And at Lincoln, a technology, perhaps, but we're in those, in the beginning part of those discussions, and becoming a, a state-approved program of study is a pretty rigorous piece, so it, it's pretty time-consuming.
And there's also talk that it may eventually become a
Competitive.
A competitive grant, which it has not been for forever.
Okay. And I think my big question would be about the state-approved CTE programs by schools. So we have, it looks like five schools where we don't have those programs at all. Grant, Jefferson, Lincoln, MLC, and Roosevelt. So is your, and I know that that's an objective, is to get those programs in each of the schools, or at least that's what I understand. Do you have a sense of what we're looking at for next year?
So there's been conversation with Grant, with their magazine and their partnership with Hollywood Theater, so we're we're having that conversation. And at Lincoln, a technology perhaps, but we're in those in the beginning part of those discussions. And becoming a state-approved program of study is a pretty rigorous piece. So it it's pretty time-consuming on the part of the teacher to pull all of the documentation together and develop a plan. But you have three years to start, you have to submit a beginning plan and then you have three years to fully implement. So as we continue these conversations with the schools, we have a little bit of time to fully put the program of study in place.
So could I just ask one follow-on for for Jefferson? Is there any reason that we couldn't coordinate with PCC, maybe and have them take a CTE program through the middle college, community college program?
Well, I believe there's Health Oc right now, they've got a pretty strong program.
Biotech.
But that doesn't show up.
With biotech, it's not showing up here. I know that they partner well with Oregon State Health, Oregon Sciences rather.
So is it correct to say that they are getting the CTE program?
They are not getting Perkins dollars.
Right.
So I'm sorry, on this, is this is just specific to Perkins dollars?
Yes, yes. These are state-approved, these are the state-approved CTE programs of study. So these programs are are receiving Perkins dollars.
But Jefferson in particular, because the partnership with PCC has
CTE opportunities that are rigorous programs, that are with PCC.
So and do some of our other high schools have rigorous CTE programs that aren't listed here, like in any of those other five schools?
So so for example, the Grant, example of Grant, they have this phenomenal magazine and program. So it it's a great program, but it doesn't have the state-approved piece and they are not receiving Perkins funding.
As a result of that.
Right.
I think that would be a good example, the slide that that we have here. So CT is really formal, it's set up through the state, you're getting Perkins dollars. If you look at the pathway, career learning opportunities that students have, students have in the district, that's where again, the Grant magazine would be a good example, the Health Oc at Jefferson would be a good example, not attached to those formal dollars coming from Perkins, Fed dollars.
Okay. But there are also examples like the early childhood education at Franklin and at Wilson where it's gone away. And my understanding was that was a budgetary decision, right? So those were really, I mean, they had an actual onsite childcare that the students were able to, drafting another one at Wilson, marketing at Madison. So I guess, I mean, this is sort of the usual and obvious and depressing question. I mean, for all the talk of investment from Arnie Duncan and the president, there doesn't appear to be any actual increase in investment. Is that, do you have any sense that there's any movement in Congress or anything toward actually supporting the talk with investment?
There hasn't been any any real conversation around it yet. I think they're kind of focused on other things right now, so kind of the trickle-down piece.
We know Dr. Crew has, in many of his speeches, talked about career-related learning, CTE, and so I think we have an advocate within the state right now regarding this work.
Well, they don't talk about investment at all at the state, other than in their name, yeah.
I'm just pointing it out.
Oh, yeah. No, appreciate it. Do you have, so just in terms of the interactions with your business partners, feedback on how well it's working or such? I mean, I definitely, the formal recommendations from the council are great and I'd love to see, you know, hear more from them. But just informally, in terms of how it's been having a point of contact at the high schools, has that been helpful? You know, because the sort of the the long-term rap against the district has been that it's been impossible for businesses to find a way to access and and provide opportunities. So can you talk a little bit about how you've been able to get feedback from businesses and make any improvements there or challenges that remain?
I think our employers are thrilled that we have points of contact in our buildings. There is somebody, there's a go-to person and when we have new opportunities available for students, we have a way to disseminate that information because each school has their own system on how they they recruit students and and communicate the information. Some of our schools are sending information directly home to parents through the Navient system.
Yeah, I get those emails a lot, yeah.
So having someone in the building make, has made a big difference in in enabling more students to take advantage of these opportunities and making it easier for businesses to work with with the district. Our numbers are higher. I think the satisfaction of our business partners is greater and I think it's been a win.
But you're also saying that you're coordinating centrally so that there's a team effort and some equity and cohesion around the district in terms of how people are doing that and and so if, but if a business had a real district-wide or a multi-school opportunity, they would go to you, is that correct?
So so many of the Career Day events come to me and then I disseminate to the school, to my coordinators, and then they disseminate it within their schools. We meet monthly and talk about different opportunities, but we also talk about what's working in their schools and what isn't working and brainstorm with each other. And it's really been a nice team effort because we have some people that are veterans in this work in our group and we also have some that are newer to this work and so it's enabled us to build a stronger team, I think.
I would add that the transition from one mayor to a new mayor, the work that took place over the last five years, you know, leading into Mary Adams' term of office, I mean, that this is a critical time in terms of people feeling like we're going to continue the work. When we met with people at Vestas, I know Carol had, Campbell had probably twenty-five people leave their cards just to say, I want to come over and visit Benson, I want to see what's going on. There's a really strong alumni group there that's very interested in partnering with the district. So it's a, it feels like right now that there are people out there that are wondering what's the move forward. We keep saying, why not Portland? Why can't Portland be a model for what a really strong urban, career-oriented education looks like and post-secondary education looks like? So there are certainly people out there right now that that are very interested in partnering. PCC Southwest is putting together a STEM program and they're very interested in working well and aligning the work. Oregon Tech recently, I can't remember, a month ago or so, partnered up with Benson, was a terrific little event there. So there are people that really do want to partner with Portland Public.
Other questions, comments?
I was looking at the report that you sent us and it was exciting to see that since two thousand seven, eight, three thousand eleven students have earned dual credits through Portland Community College and the majority of these are CTE-related. And it looks like in two thousand eleven, twelve, five thousand one hundred and ninety-six dual credits were earned. So in terms of those credits earned, do you have a sense of what high schools those students attended?
I would love to answer that question for you. I have asked for that information from PCs, from PCC so that I could break it down, not only by high school, but also by program. And I don't, I don't have that information, but I will follow up and get that to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
I guess I have one follow-up question. There was a slide in there that talked about what the advisors were recommending. It had a vision, it had a, and if I remember correctly, there was something about build infrastructure at the school. And then there was also build infrastructure district wi, infrastructure district-wide. And I just want to make sure my understanding is that because I don't often hear people say they want PPS to build additional administration or central office support. Is that, my understanding of what they're saying is that you just as a district have capacity of?
That's a great clarifying question. Yeah, they, I think if we look at the Advisory Council, they question the capacity that we have internally to be able to do this work. And I think that's where historically there's been some frustration. You know, there are, there are a lot of people out there right now with a lot of ideas that really, really want to partner with us. And so it's the follow-up, it's the, it's it's making sure that we're realistic about what it means to be a partner. And so I think they see that as an infrastructure. Do we have the capacity to manage it? When you look at the number of high school students, for example, that if we wanted to put together a a program of job shadowing or internships, things like that, you're talking about a significant number of kids that would be involved and how do you manage that? We're looking at things like how do we use technology to do that, where companies could do videos and then students could sit at the computer and get a sort of a look at what it, what it means to be inside their company. So we're looking at ways to be creative to solve the capacity issue, but you're you're exactly right. They really, they question that.
And I would add that right now, we we are having, we say students have to have one career learning experience over the course of four years and our Advisory Council and our business partners, you know, students should have maybe more than one. And maybe it should be more than a guest speaker, maybe it, you know, as we move along the continuum. And in order to do that, you know, we'd have to have the infrastructure to make that happen.
Anything else?
And the expo is coming up. It's on
March nineteenth.
March nineteenth.
At the Convention Center.
Yeah, Convention Center, it's a great opportunity.
Have you invited Mayor Hales to that?
We we have, we actually met last week at Grant with one of the mayor's advisors. Vivian Orland is very interested in trying to see whether or not there's a way to do some insur, internships with local government. And so we had a great conversation. Kevin Jean Scale was there and so we extended the invitation. Governor Kitzaberg will be there and Dr. Crew are scheduled to be there. Carol's there, so we thought that might be appropriate for the mayor.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, so the next area that we'll be taking a look at is our online learning. And this was actually coming back and revisiting what was a a five-tiered plan that we talked about during our budget preparation last year. And we have presenting this, this particular piece of our our budget deep dive, Karina Wolf, who's the Director of Multiple Pathways to Graduation and Ed Options, and Dion Bertuan Hernandez, who is the Assistant Director of Learning and Credit Options. So and we're really excited to hear this update.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Smith, co-chairs, directors. We're excited to have this opportunity, like Superintendent Smith just said, to give you an update from where we've been since we came a year ago, where we've been the last year, and then also our projections into the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dion.
It's a pleasure to meet you guys tonight. I think I'm the shortest-term person here as opposed to seven years. I think it's been less than maybe five months or so. So what I'd like to share with you tonight is a little bit perspective of the context of our work this year, look at some demographics as well as some successes and some challenges that we're facing and some thoughts about the future. You have this chart in your appendix, I think it's C, so you can actually read it. But some context is the proposal that was made last year around a tiered plan for online and blended learning. There are five tiers, just quickly. The first one was blended learning for credit recovery. The second one was blended learning for special options such as home instruction. The third one was to look at blended learning or online learning for proficiency-based course completion. The fourth one was to look at blended online learning for a virtual school. And then the last one is to look at blended online learning for supplemental purposes for students who have a full schedule. The decision last year was made to really focus on credit recovery and that was in terms of blended online learning, in terms of an equity strategy for closing the achievement gap, giving kids one more option and how to to complete their courses. So that was connected to two different district priorities, one about individual student supports and then also equitable access to rigorous core curriculum. With the investment that the board made last year, we were able to to hire the equivalent of four-point-five teachers and to begin our work around online curriculum. And so we are focusing this year primarily on Tier One in terms of providing students with credit, credit recovery options, as well as some limited pilots for Tier Two around special programs and Tier Three in terms of some course completion. So before I continue, I want to make sure that I answer the question, what blended learning is in terms of what that looks like for Portland Public. Using a national approach, the blended learning is really along a continuum that goes from looking at online learning or online access in a traditional classroom all the way up to virtual schools where students are online all day and may have access to teachers through video conferencing or messaging, et cetera. So as you look at Portland Public, we are looking at different, different models along that continuum. So what does it look like for us this year? We're supporting, we've enrolled over eight hundred students. The first two hundred are in our, our community-based organizations. They're using content that's called Apex, it's not an acronym, that's the name of the company. And we're also using Apex in our alternative schools. So that's two hundred students approximately right now. In our comprehensive high schools, we're using a different curriculum called Florida Virtual and we're serving six, seven of our schools. And we are also piloting in primarily smaller groups with exception of Portland Evening Scholars. We have five classes that just began about two weeks ago in terms of blended learning at Portland Evening Scholars. So that's about eight hundred students. Excuse me. In terms of some data to give you a sense of where we were last year and this year in in three areas, one is the area in terms of what grade levels we're supporting this year as opposed to last year. We also have the groups that we're supporting in terms of students with special needs, our ESL students and our TAG students in comparison last year and this year. And the, the last group that we're looking at in terms of our demographics is the students that we're working with this year as opposed to last year. So as it is a new program, is going to have some successes and we have lots of opportunity to grow. And our first of our successes is that we have focused in on Tier One, that's a credit recovery, using a, the rigorous blended learning. And we have an awesome staff. They started off new to blended learning and they've done tremendous work this year in terms of really learning what that looks like and adapting for our situation. In our comprehensive high schools in particular, we have onsite mentors who support the students in terms of the pacing through their courses and then our virtual scholar teachers and that relationship is growing over the course of the year. We also are working with Hillsborough Online that began the work also this year in terms of a virtual school. They're also using Florida Virtual, so we have collaborated them, with them, not just in terms of the staff, but also from administrators, looking at the challenges that we're facing and working through those together. We're working with Oregon Virtual School District that provides the, houses our courses and ODE and then the work with our IT department has been phenomenal. We have a lot of work to do here, but we're beginning to develop guidelines and processes to help support our our student intake process. And then also looking at when students struggle online, what are our interventions and how do we actually support students to make sure that they have meaningful access online? We have data conversations on about every three weeks with our teachers to find out how our students are doing individually in our online courses. And we have some pilots that I talked to a little bit before. We have, we have one Spanish course over at Roosevelt that we're doing with a blended learning approach. We have some students in the middle school, we have some that are doing some additional courses from advanced course, kids that are taking pre-calculus that are in eighth grade, as well as some students that are in our math program at Hossford and providing them some supplemental support in terms of making sure that they meet the OCS requirements. And then we also have, as I mentioned before, our Portland Evening Scholars. And this is growing over time, but what we're finding is that really having a strong professional development program around the pedagogy of online learning, the technology of online learning, and making sure that we blend those two things for our staff has been really crucial and that is growing over the course of the year. So you wanted to introduce this piece.
Uh, Karina, keep it quick. Sure. Thank you. So I think as far as on the other end, kind of lessons learned and growth opportunities, one of the things that we really are as far as a program within a school district is we're at a great place of of honest tension. And so I district is we're at a great place of honest tension. And so I think we've been, online learning's been introduced, and so there's a lot of curiosity within the district, and we're also learning a lot as we're trying things out district-wide. One of the things that, as Dion said initially, is we looked at our course failures, for instance, and looked at it as an equity opportunity, looking at focusing on credit recovery as our focus for this year. That's really frustrating sometimes when you're a counselor in a high school and you think this would be a great opportunity and you have wonderful students who would really take advantage and would enjoy a certain amount of rigor. And so part of what we're working with right now is a real kind of a pacing issue. And so that's one of the things that, that is wonderful because people want more, and we're at a place where we're really wanting to refine and make sure that what we do is we're doing really holistically and really sound, with sound fundamental practice all the way through. I'm going to actually pass it right back to Dion as, as you can read certainly the rest of the lessons learned on this slide. If you want to share your story of the young man from Portland Evening Scholars the other day?
Yes, absolutely. One of the things that, we were at Portland Evening Scholars, and as I'm walking down the aisle, listening to students, one of the students made the comment, "Oh, this means I'm going to have to be doing the work all the way through." And it was sort of that aha moment that the student had that if I'm not here, the course isn't going to move along without me. And if, so if the student is gone, when they get back, it's right where they left off. And so that was sort of that one aha moment for a student. And I think that that comes to the, the whole idea around the rigor around online learning is it doesn't let go. It doesn't, doesn't go away when a student decides that they're going to not come to class, for example. So one of the lessons learned is that it really takes highly qualified teachers to be part of the system, that when you have that relationship with a motivated teacher mentor, a highly qualified teacher, then having rigor and addressing the rigor of the course is possible. Students really need the structures. Moving into, there's a myth, I think, that students, because they are very social on the internet, they are, and they do that without anybody's support. They can pick it up very quickly and they move on. However, for students to become academic online, they need teachers. They need that guidance. And I think that's probably, probably the most important lesson here is that they can't just smoothly walk into an online class and boom, it happens. The teacher guidance is important because students begin to realize that they have three things that, or three characteristics that they really need to develop to become strong online learners. One is that they really need to figure out what does it mean to participate online. It looks different than what they've been trained to do since they were kindergarten. They need to be persistent in a different way. That looks different than what it looks like in a brick and mortar classroom. And that their level of patience is different when it's online. There isn't somebody checking to make sure you understood all the time. So it looks different to be a successful student online. One of our greatest challenges is this year is really making sure that our online curriculum meets the need, the specific needs of Portland Public School students. One is that we need to make sure that it addresses the common core. The second is that we look at the literacy needs of our students. Our Florida Virtual is written at a 10th grade level, and that's not always accessible by all of our students who are in credit recovery. So what are we going to do about that? We have language, specific language needs for our students. Again, we need to look at the curriculum, make sure it's accessible, accessible to students. Our students who have special needs, especially if it's a learning disability, that we need to make sure that we have different ways of students showing what they know and learning what they need to know online. It's not just one way of doing it. And finally, that we really look at our curriculum. Much of the curriculum that's out there is built on sort of a generic United States view of online learning. And so I think that we need to look at our curriculum and make sure that it's culturally relevant for our students. And that process is beginning, but we have a lot of work to do in that area.
So I just want to point out that
Yes.
You have about 15 minutes for presentation and we're about at that time.
We're almost done.
If I'm looking at the slides, I'm not sure.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Very quickly in terms of IT, thank you for the reminder. Our IT department, you can't do online without IT. It's impossible. We need to make sure that we're very scaffolding in our approach, both for staff and for students, to make that transition between online, I mean, brick and mortar classes and online. And that goes around the whole issue of time and professional development. It won't happen by itself. And finally, in terms of lessons learned, we have realized that we cannot treat all of our content areas the same online. We're going to need to look specifically at math and foreign language and look at how we address those online. It won't be the same as social studies or language arts. So we have, we know we need to look at our effectiveness, so we're beginning to decide what the data points will be. So this slide addresses those areas. And then we have three top priorities for investments, depending on what the trajectory is. What is the tier that we want to address next year? Those would be the infrastructure, and the infrastructure meaning our staffing and our equipment, that we look at how we address the issues around curriculum. And lastly, what are we going to do in terms of the professional development, that transition from a brick and mortar to the online? What does it mean in terms of the pedagogy, as well as the technology and the supports that we have for everybody along, along that continuum of intake?
And so I think this is our last slide. So with regard to budget, when we look, and again, continuing the conversation from this time last year, currently we have 5.5 FTE in the program. And drawing specifically from our lessons learned, one of the things we know that we're requesting in our, as we grow forward, is to look at acquiring special education instruction on our staff, to look to incorporating ESL instructor on our staff, to look at having somebody who can do that scaffolding as a math specialist, to work at how we really look at, how did our students do and where do we really need to direct our intention, and to make sure that we're growing in ways that again, address equity and achievement for all. And so really using that as our focus for looking forward. So our request for the upcoming year is to, is to grow, to add 5.5 FTE, to become a total of 11 FTE district-wide. Then the following year, as, as we've talked about previously, is to look at and identifying if we'll be ready to open and create a virtual academy, a virtual scholars academy. And then in 15, 16, three years from now, looking at really having implemented district-wide, not just in pilots, all of our tiers one through five. So that's, those are really kind of where we're, where we're at and where we see ourselves heading in a, in a healthy growth model. And this is just the appendix. So we would love to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to commend you for taking exactly 15 minutes for the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. And I guess I'm interested in hearing your, your thoughts on this. We learned about the specific target around credit recovery, and then as we're going through slides, we see a, the enrollment from last year to this year change, and the demographics change to become sort of minority-majority in terms of students accessing, well, becoming virtual scholars. Is that, was there an intentionality around chain, you know, changing those demographics or reaching out to those groups? And the reason I'm asking is that earlier we saw one of our, one of our schools, Creative Science, in what appears to be sort of a struggle of finding students to apply for programs and, within that, that school. Was there an outreach or do we have a disproportionate number of kids of color who are in need of credit recovery?
So, yes and yes.
Okay.
So yes, we, there was intentionality around it, and yes, we have a disproportionality of course failures. As an example, I'll just take math as one of the things that really stands out. When we look at course failures, 20, just as a district, 24% of our African-American students have failed a math class. They're 12% of our student population. So we can look at specific courses and then look at specific communities of color or communities of color versus dominant white students and see how are we doing. Part of what we've done also, and Dion's done an amazing job coming in new this year, is really working with counselors around how are we getting the right students. One of the things that we have is, she talked about two different curriculums, Apex and Florida Virtual, and, how do you help students who we, so we do something that I think is pretty tricky. We target students who have not necessarily been successful in courses before, and we're asking them in some ways to really learn a new skill in addition to learning the content area that we want. And so it's been, it's been challenging and we've targeted, we've targeted certain populations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I'm understanding it right, I mean, really the past, with the Plato in the past, it really was just sort of, here's an option to maybe recover some credits, not as intentional. But now we actually have the dedicated program and teachers who are supporting students. So if I'm understanding it right, it's the dedicated teaching staff and coordination district-wide that's assisting students around the district. We're still enrolled in the regular school, but this is more of an enhanced and more, hopefully more high-quality experience for them.
Yes. I am, in terms of, and I don't know that it's specific to Plato. I think this could actually happen to any online, that you can have, without the role of the teacher, I call it completion through clicking. That's one option. And then there's a rigorous option. And the rigorous option comes because there's a teacher who's looking at the work students do, don't just use a computer. They upload assignments, they do videos, and the teacher is providing them feedback. And they also do what are called discussion-based assessments. So a student may have done something that was an assessment on the computer, teacher calls them up or does a video with them and says, "So let's talk a little bit more about what you were learning, what were your questions? Let me ask you some further probing questions." And so the rigor comes because there's a teacher there.
Right, right. Yeah, it's just really exciting to see us actually move into doing this in a real way, and then the possibility of potentially expanding it. And the way you have it mapped out in terms of the tiers, I think is, is really helpful just to see the complexity of it, but the differing needs and how, how far it could go in meeting all the different challenges that we're facing, up to the point of having, in addition to this, the potential for having a virtual academy, as well as enhanced opportunities for kids who aren't needing credit recovery, but it would be an extra opportunity. So it's really, it's really exciting.
I want to say that as a, as a new person, it was really, it, I thought it was really smart to start with the hardest part. It's really hard to do credit recovery online. But I think that what that does is the system has to pay attention to what makes it complex. And so rather than having solutions later that are sort of layered on something that was, that worked for everybody, that really what we're paying attention to is what makes it difficult and make, give equal access to students. And so I think that though it's the hardest place to start, I think it was a great place to start.
And I think your insight about students needing the support of the teachers is really, really key here. Really, really helpful to hear that. I think we might just too easily assume that the students could just do it on their own.
Right. And they think so too. And then they're surprised when it's really hard.
And can you follow up real quick on, there's the mentor teacher, which I think is the person onsite, which may or may not be endorsed in that. I'm not sure.
Correct.
And then, and then there's the, the virtual scholar teacher. Is that what it's called?
Yes, yes.
And that's the person maybe that's highly qualified in that? Can you talk a little bit about that structure?
Yeah. So the teachers, the majority of our students are in a credit recovery lab. And so the person who is supervising them, but it's actually very, it's much more than supervising. Their role is to make sure that students are connecting with the teacher, which, their virtual teacher, which is new to the students. They're kind of like, teacher's not here. They're not seeing that I have my hand raised. So helping kids through that process, keeping them on pace. And that's a challenge right now because every student, the beauty of this and the challenge is that every student is there in their own spot. So kind of keeping track of 100 students all in their own spot is a challenge in itself. And then providing some of the technical support that students need to stay on track. That's the mentor's role. And it's a really, I call the part of the three-legged stool. They're, they're one of the legs. The other one then is the virtual scholar teachers, and all of them are highly qualified. We have health, math, language arts, science, and social studies.
I'm not really sure how to ask that question. So in terms of your mentor teachers, are these typically new teachers to Portland Public Schools, or are these teachers who are learning online as they go?
The mentor teacher or the virtual scholar teacher?
The mentor teacher.
The mentor teachers are all part of the comprehensive high school. It's typically a period in the day that they have that the principal is assigned to the credit recovery lab.
And the mentor teacher who's in the credit recovery lab is a Portland Public School teacher?
Yes.
And how is it that they get their professional development to do this work?
A very good question. We didn't start off in September answering that question very well. We did after-school, an hour, two hours of support, and it proved not to be enough at all. So through our budget in, in learning credit options, we then had a full day of training in January, which we should have done in September. So we'll start next September differently. I think another part of that is that we really need to look at support during the summer so that teachers can really hit the ground running. On the first day of class, they should feel really confident about their, their technology skills and their role. So I think that we really need to look at something during the summer to address that. So they're not getting it after the fact.
And it also occurs to me that there's many districts in Oregon who have pretty extensive online learning opportunities already set up. And, you know, even some sort of professional development where teachers could go visit those districts.
Yes.
Hillsborough, Salem, several of those seem like they could be great opportunities.
Absolutely.
And one of my questions for you, Superintendent, is in terms of our schools of education, are you getting a sense that new teachers coming out of our schools of education are also being trained in online learning at all?
You know, actually, that's more of a question for you, I think, than, than for me.
I mean, how do we, how do we take this to scale, I think is sort of what I'm asking.
I actually think that should be a conversation with higher ed. What I'm noticing is, no. I don't see that as, we have a few of our teachers, our virtual scholar teachers, who are currently Portland Public School teachers. And what they have is enormous love for the kids, and that's actually probably the number one thing. But our teachers who are new, who are either subs right now or working in Portland Evening Scholars, they're new to this. And the pedagogy around online learning is much, goes much further beyond than a textbook online. It's all the pedagogy around that, and it's new to them. It's new.
And so one of the things you'll see in the budget request from this year, one of the differences from this next year versus this current year, is a larger request around professional development, with some more intentionality around how do we do that for both our mentor teachers and our online teachers?
Yeah, I would think that would be huge. What was interesting is when we heard from the Madison teachers, how often professional development came up in that conversation. And in this one, you can hear it pretty loud and clear as well.
Yep.
It's exciting.
When I'm looking at the budget staffing chart that you guys have laid out, there's a 1.0 ESL, 1.0 Special Education, which I think is great, again, focusing on how do we make this work for the people where, the students we're most challenged to serve well. So I, really excited. Can you talk to me about what the 1.0 academic liaison?
Absolutely.
What is that?
That is, when we look at our, our data, and we do, when we look at our data, we look at kid by kid, how they're doing. There is a lot of support that needs to happen there, which is interfacing with, with each of the schools, with the counselors, with the different folks that are support systems for students in the buildings, as well as the outreach to parents. This is such a different environment for students that how we support the 360 around a student takes a lot of energy. And so I think that the role of an academic liaison really looks at the specific needs for each of the students, be it, are the students not making progress because they haven't been going to school? Are they not making progress because the course that we've selected for them is at a literacy level that is not appropriate to them? So that person, I envision having very personal knowledge So that person I envision having, um, very personal lo- knowledge about every single student, um, all along the continuum.
So help me understand, if there's a mentor teacher, which should theoretically have the smallest load, you mentioned earlier that that, it's hard for them to track a hundred students.
Yep.
And then there's a highly qualified teacher, the virtual scholar, who has theoretically a much bigger load because they're supporting at a, how would an academic liaison who would be serving the entire online learning be the one to best serve that individual student?
That's a good question. The mentor teacher actually doesn't have the role of the outreach at this point. And it may be certainly something that we should talk about is the changing role of that mentor teacher in each of the schools. And that's an emerging conversation. And when I look at, when we look at our students, we, um, we use a response to intervention approach. So when we look at, um, the majority of our students making progress and then our 20% or, or 5% that are not making progress, is being able to target, um, that's person being able to target where we think we're going to get the most or the most critical movement, uh, so that students are successful. But I don't know that it's a complete model. It's the next step in the model. Um, in terms of when I see what we're all spending time on, then I think that somebody who specializes in that will be able to move us forward.
Can I ask one more question? Um, we all spend a fair amount of time in schools visiting classrooms. If we wanted to visit a classroom or two and really understand where we're at on this, could you set that up for us or figure out where the best places would be? Because I know I would certainly be interested in that.
I had the great fortune of while I was on another school visit of running into a mentor teacher and the virtual scholar there. And I felt bad for the principal because I latched on to those two and talked for almost 45 minutes about how this is working.
So I would love that opportunity.
We would love that too. That would be great.
I guess my, the last thing I'll throw out for us and, and for you as we consider, is I look at doing our own online learning. And I know that, I, I think many of us are excited about that. But I also wonder if there's efficiency, like why recreate? If the, if the whole advantage is that other people are doing it and their boundaries aren't, is there advantage to us doing it? I know there's benefit to us owning the material or knowing the system, but, um, do you have any quick thoughts on that?
Well, one of the areas that I feel we spend, that we're all growing together, when we talk about system alignment as a district, we also, some of the conversations that are happening are between student services. And the needs, for instance, one, I, I think it was touched on early on on tier two is for home instruction. So we talk about student services and the need for home instruction. We talk about special education. And some students who, um, who we need to be creative to meet their needs. And we also talk about, uh, multiple pathways where online learning, um, lives. And how do we work and serve different needs in the system? Um, as far as aligning all of our, uh, all of our academic services. And so I think there's, um, there's a growing conversation about how we can articulate and, and serve our own students best. One of the things we do is we have, um, other contracts. Or looking particularly, right now I'm thinking particularly with special education and some of the different services that we contract or we bill out for other, um, folks to provide to some of our high need students. How would it work or could it work for different students for us to serve more collaboratively, more collaboratively in-house? And so I think those are some of the alignments that we think about where are we, what's our vision for our best self as a district in the future?
I think also, um, one of the things that, that my teachers are realizing that with curriculum that was written for the national audience, when it comes down to a specific student who's, let's say in credit recovery is, is looking at language arts, those, um, the national curriculum doesn't align to what Portland Public does. And so a student may end up in a course that looks very different than what Portland Public does. So my teachers are beginning to look at those, um, the different curriculum that we have, or curricula that we have, and adapting it so that it really meets, it, it zones in or zeroes in right at what the student needs rather than kind of this broad swath of language arts or Algebra I. So we have a lot to do there, but I think that what we'll end up with is something that's much more specific to the needs of our students rather than something that was built for thousands and thousands of kids that don't live in Oregon or Portland Public.
Great. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You guys, thank you very much.
You bet.
Um, and our, our next budget topic, um, is dual language immersion. And we have GM Garcia, who was actually, uh, and Melissa Goff, our Director of Teaching and Learning. GM, um, is in charge of our dual language immersion and came and saw us earlier in the year to look at kind of a vision of where we're heading with our dual language immersion. And we'll look forward to this update taking us deeper. Thanks, GM.
Good evening, co-chairs and superintendent and, um, board members. Uh, the last time that we met, we discussed a little bit of the difference between ESL and dual language. And I saw that it came up again. And so tonight I will briefly go over a little bit of clarification and some update on our student demographics, which should lead us to the activity we've been doing this year and the investment needs for the future. And so I'll start with just some quick definitions. And I will just say right up front, there's a little bit of, um, alphabet soup here. Uh, but just quickly, dual language immersion is the program. It is general education. And so that's really the access that we're providing to students. And within the dual language program, we have two types of students. And so one of them is what we call ELL students. Um, these are the students for whom English is a newer language. So you've heard us talk about referring to students as emergent bilinguals. In dual language, we do make that distinction between an ELL student and a native English speaker, simply because one of the things that we, that we want in the design of the model is about half the students are native English speakers. And so you've also heard the term ELD, and that really stands for the service or the instruction that ELL students get. So as a state, we are required to provide, uh, special services, instruction to help them overcome the language barrier of English. And so even within the dual language programs, we, we have to provide some sort of ELD service. And then as you've, uh, we've traditionally referred to the kids this way, but ESL, English as a Second Language, is the department that oversees our approach to teaching ELD as well as oversees that the district is providing access to content. So just a little bit of a comparison, we have a lot in common. Basically, uh, the dual language program, our goal is bilingualism, that the kids become bilingual, biliterate. Whereas in the ESL, uh, program, the goal really is English language proficiency. That's, that's really what their focus is. So we are general education, basically the math, reading, writing. And whereas ESL is a supplemental support for students, that's above and beyond something that native English speakers don't get. And so our focus really is the development of native language and culture. And the traditional approach to ESL is one that you might call subtractive, where, um, English is actually replacing the native language in the traditional sense. And as a district, we're looking to really celebrate and, uh, encourage native language maintenance. But the reality is the ESL model is designed to get to English as fast as you can. And so there isn't a, a language preservation or maintenance piece to that. And then again, um, when we look at our staffing, um, in the mainstream classroom, we're talking about certified bilingual teachers, just your classroom teachers. And the service that ESL provides is usually in or outside of the mainstream, but it has especially certified teachers, someone who's teaching English as a second language. And so as you know, we collaborate and have, uh, converging interests as far as our student enrollment. We want half of them to be ELL students. And for both of our departments, the goal is that the children do learn English, that, but that's just part of our goal. And so quickly, just a refresher, I think that most of you have seen this graph before out of the Collier and Thomas, um, study. This is what compels us to do these programs in our district. That dotted blue line you see at the top represents the average kid at grade level each year. And so that, um, is compared to where students are if they're English language learners. So you see that in the first years, there's not that much of a difference in program outcomes. But it is after five or more years of participating in these programs that our ELL students not only meet the level at which native English speakers do at grade level, but we exceed it. So the two-way model you see at the top is the one that we are implementing in the majority of our Spanish, uh, programs. And so we had also taught, and mind you, I just wanted to remind you, in that graph, that is student achievement in English. Because that's a national study. And so the question is how do the students fare? So, um, some of our activity this year has included the addition of Cesar Chavez. We'll talk a little bit more about new program expansion. But for now, uh, what we have done is added kindergarten in Cesar Chavez. We're looking at Lent, um, uh, for the addition of another classroom because as we discussed last time, the schools that are still, um, conducting programs with one class per grade level are challenging our middle schools as far as sustainability of our programs. And, um, we have also revised our timelines and activities for what it will look like to open new programs. And so, uh, this Thursday, actually, we're meeting with all of our principals to talk about what dual language is, where we have it, why we do it. And to form a subcommittee of administrators to look at the entire map of the district, where our student needs are in demographics, and to be a part of creating what is the plan for where programs would happen, which languages, and how we can best, uh, serve our students. And in the past, we have not really included principals at that level of planning. And so in looking at our program startups that we've done in the past, um, at this point, Spanish has materials set up. And so we're estimating approximately $20,000. That is a very conservative figure, just to let you know, um, that is just with how we've done it in the past. And so when we look at less commonly taught languages, the cost difference has to do with whether or not it's a program we're replicating or one we're starting new. So with the less commonly taught languages, starting new takes a lot more curriculum assessment and, uh, development of the programs. So, um, to replicate one is a, somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. And to start a new program, we're looking at probably about $100,000. And so that's, uh, what we have estimated it costs to start the new programs. Just again, I want to, um, emphasize that expansion has traditionally included FTE, people. But that has been funded by a grant. I'll tell you about later some of the grants that we have had. So again, principals have not traditionally been involved in expansion or new program development in the ways that we envision. So quickly, I'd just like to go over some of the demographics because again, this is a high leverage educational program that we are using to close the opportunity gap for ELL students. I don't want to underplay, when we go into demographics, we need 50% of our students to be native English speakers. And so we have had an imbalance, but I want to emphasize that our goal is that when we accept students in kindergarten and first grade, we have a balance of about 50% native English speakers and 50% of the target language. So we've dug into our data to see where are we? And so we looked at our two-way models, that's seven of the eight Spanish language schools. And what we've had consistently year after year is about 42% overall of Spanish speakers. Uh, or I should say of ELL students in our seven, uh, models. So in our Spanish language programs, it's been about 38%. And in our Russian program, we're actually a little over. It's about 53%, which is okay. That's about right. And so one of the best, um, places for us to make sure that we have balanced student population is how we accept them in kinder and first. So that's really where our goal is to have half and half. So we, uh, looked at our K and first grade numbers right now, and we're at about, uh, 41% ELL students in the Spanish program and 62 of our Russian-speaking students. So we looked also at ethnicity for student participation in our programs and found, go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question? On that last slide, you talked about, you gave percentages of ELL students, but all students that have a native language
Correct.
may not be identified as ELL. So does that, if we don't look at just ELL population, does that number change? Is our target for ELL students or is our target for native speaking of that?
Right. And that is, um, a very good and compelling point that we've grappled with. We have been identifying our native, uh, Spanish speakers through the ELL identification. But one of the things that emerges, um, is that we have a number of students who are bilingual, for whom there isn't a dominant language. And so the other piece that we, that is also not reflected here is the student who was never identified as ELL and has a home where Spanish or another language is spoken. So we have not gathered that data at this point. And when I share with you, um, some of the demographics in our Russian program, that's problematic as well because they're white. And so it's almost the opposite where we want to know who are the native language speakers. But we did pull a little bit of data around heritage language in Spanish that I'll get to in a moment. So thank you for asking the question. It's something that we are looking at how we collect our data in the future. So if we, um, look at our demographics, like I said, we are much more diverse than I think, uh, urban legend would say. Again, the, um, proportion of whites is, uh, probably representative of what we have in our native English speaking group. That's always going to be a higher number. And so in, this is the part that I told you, we just by, um, subtraction basically came up with, we've got 36% students in our Spanish immersion programs who are Latino, but not identified as English language learners. So that's where we get at the heritage language piece. That would have been me as a child, English dominant, but mom and dad speak Spanish. And then when we looked at our poverty overall, that was higher than I would have guessed as well. Overall, in our Spanish, uh, programs, we're at 63% students eligible for free and reduced. Now, our Russian program, as you know, is at, uh, fifth grade now. And so they're about to matriculate into middle school. So we have quite a few of those students we can look at as a bigger sample. Again, 92% are white, but that doesn't really tell us a lot about language or heritage. Uh, believe it or not, we've got 10% Latino students in our Russian program. And, um, 71% is the free and reduced rate, um, of the students at Kelly participating in the program. And then again, one unknown is who are the heritage language speakers? And so we don't know that at that point. And we're looking at different ways to collect data as we enroll students.
Isn't that, isn't that information in a registration form? Do you speak, what language do you speak at home?
It is and it isn't in different ways. One of the things you do with the, in the registration form is identify ethnicity. And many Eastern Europeans will mark white because they are. And then the other question is whether or not a language, um, other than English is spoken in the home. And we have a pretty high error rate of what immigrant families will typically report in that respect. So it's not very reliable data. And so, um, that's, like I said, something that we will, um, gather differently upfront when we, um, enroll students. So, um, basically we current, in our current budget, we have three teachers who have been providing professional development for all the dual language teachers. They're teachers on special assignment. And, uh, we are challenged at this point with our schools who are getting those first small cohorts of students in middle and high school and reducing their FTE and their building budget. They're really looking at our department and saying, so aren't you going to provide a teacher? So that's this big gap. And it's very difficult, I think, to understand on paper. When you see 17 kids coming in, that doesn't generate a lot of FTE. And so this expectation or the, I think the unwritten rule at the schools is, well, dual immersion will help you out. And that's not an area that we have monies for. We don't have a staff or a budget for that. The other piece is that we have had a number of, uh, foreign language assistance program grants. Um, thanks to our esteemed colleague, Michael Bacon, we have brought in a lot of money to the district that got our programs started. They provided, uh, people to start the programs as well as to teach. And so this is, last year was our last year. We got a continuance. So that this is the last year for all of those grants with the exception of the Chinese. And so that has been a challenge in that, um, it was seed money and we used it as such. But picking up where the grant leads off is always a challenge, um, transitionally. And so, um, we were asked, like any other department, to look at if, what if we did need to cut 5%? And the devastating, uh, piece that we just can't sacrifice is the professional development that the teachers are getting that is specific to the work that they do. And so when we look at our priorities in the- And so, when we look at our priorities in the future, like I said, this Thursday, we're meeting with principals, just to give them the information and get their interest in forming a committee that looks at the entire district. And when we select which schools are going forward, we want to be incredibly aggressive in front-loading what those principals get in the way of professional development and their opportunity to build their own programs. And so, investing in our principals and other leaders in central office has been a huge priority for us. So, developing that committee is something that will identify the schools, but then we want to send those schools to other schools, send them to professional development. So, we have to make sure that when we're planning these programs, we have sustainability in mind, a K through 12 plan, because some of the bumps that we've run into is that lack of foresight as to where will these guys go to middle school, or how many middle schools, and some of, you know, that's really where we're challenged, is moving our programs up to middle and high school. And then, we want to continue with the quality control that we've started with our principals and our staff, we really have them actively reflecting on their programs in quantitative ways, and making changes at the school level. And so, this year, the investment in the dual-language program was $571.98, and we are asking for a significant increase. We would like to continue the activity that we've started with our principals and our leaders, as well as our teachers, in their professional development, but we want program expansion to look differently than it has in the past. In the past, it really has been perceived as something that comes from central office. And so, Scott is an example of a school that is in their first year, they are spending a lot of monies and getting creative as to where they could pay for it, to retroactively prepare these kindergarten teachers, to work with their community. So, they're doing a lot of the things that we would like to see done before the school year starts. And so, we, I believe, and I know that my team believes, that the buck really does stop with the administrators, as far as our ability to implement quality programs and to expand in a way that's thoughtful, and with the end in mind.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna say, another stellar 15-minute on the dot, so, nice job.
[laughing]
And I don't, I don't make light of this, this has been a real effort to try and have staff presentations be 15 minutes, and then have the rest of the time be for board members to discuss, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was gonna send a follow-up email after this, this meeting, saying something that's the same effect.
Because...
Because we have the information, you've given us the information, we need to let our audience know what we're talking about. At the same time, the value comes really in a dialogue for us to understand, so, thank you. Questions with that opportunity?
So, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I have one quick question, and then I want to get into my...
Longer question.
Longer question. In terms of expanding the budget by 200,000 or so for next year, is that primarily for professional development?
Yes, as well as some of the materials and curriculum, the gaps that we've identified that we have. Assessment is a big piece of that as well. We actually do an assessment above and beyond everybody else, in that we have certain benchmarks for assessing language, and we're using a nationally normed test, and it's expensive. And so, our grant has funded a lot of that activity.
I just was trying to figure out if you were talking about bodies or professional development, or sometimes it's both.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be both. So, another piece that you may not think of, that I didn't think of before I was in charge of the Instructional Resource Center this year, is the fact that we look at bolstering our libraries at our dual-language programs. And when books come into those libraries in, for example, Mandarin, Chinese, they're not translated books, that are, they're actually texts that we order from China that are in Mandarin in the first place. That costs money for us and time, to actually have people go in and figure out, what does this title actually say, and how do I apply a number to this title, so that every time this title comes through, now it's automated, and we know what that number is. Most books in English have numbers already applied to them, but we're finding in Russian, in Mandarin, and Japanese, we have a different challenge in front of us.
Interesting.
My first reaction to that was, just get an interpreter, and just do it! But then, I learned about library-ing, and ISBN, it's a big deal, apparently, because we actually create an ISBN number, so then, anybody else who buys that Mandarin book has the benefit of what we're doing, basically blazing trails.
So, I think my bigger question I wanted to ask is, it seems like we have been encouraging expansion of dual-language immersion programs, and the question I have is related to quality. So, what is it, and maybe this demands a bigger discussion, but how is it that we are ensuring during our hiring process, that our teachers coming in have not just strong verbal skills, but strong writing skills, strong teaching skills, and the rest, who are teaching in immersion programs? And again, are our schools of education helping in this area? And then, the second question is, when they're, when we have teachers here, and in particular, when we don't have principals who are bilingual or native speakers, when we go through the teacher evaluation process, how is it that they can tell that quality teaching is actually happening?
Okay, well, there's two parts to that question about the quality of the teachers. We do, when we hire bilingual teachers, it's a much longer process, because they actually go through a screening process that measures not only their verbal skills in understand, comprehension, and speaking, but also gets a writing sample and requires for them to teach. And I don't know if we do that for all teachers, but we actually watch a mini lesson. And so, there is a screening process, that's more impressive than I've seen anywhere in Oregon, and in fact, we've got universities looking at the screening process, because it is so rigorous. I've been out recruiting with HR, and I have yet to hear of another program saying, we've got a process in place. And so, that's, that's one piece. The other piece, as far as our principals' ability to observe and evaluate teachers, they should be able, if we go back to what sheltered instruction is, the dual-language teachers should be the most sheltered teachers that there are, knowing that there's a portion of the kids, often half, or in our Chinese and Japanese programs, more than half, who aren't proficient in your language. So, I have said that we should be able to walk into any dual-immersion class, regardless of language, and be able to identify the objective of the lesson and what the kids should be doing. If sheltered instruction really is happening, you should not have to have linguistic access to know what's happening. We have had some principals do it with interpreters, do the observations, but we've been talking with them and actually cross-pollinating, that other principals are saying what I just said, I don't need an interpreter, I know when kids are engaged, and I know when the noise is naughty-off task talking versus, you know, really talking about the content area. And I took it to the test, I went into a second-grade Japanese classroom, and I knew exactly what the objective was, after about two or three minutes of, and I knew when kids were engaged or not. So, supporting our principals on how to observe, regardless of language, is one big piece. The other piece about our principals, we have been very aggressive this year in looking for bilingual, bicultural principals, and that would be nice to have them in all our buildings, but that is not our reality. So, just as much as we look at bilingual, you know, diverse hiring in our administrative ranks, it's important for us to focus on the principals who are not bilingual, and building their skills to be the leaders for their building. So, I, and I have been in situations where someone has been put in a position because of their language skills, and it is after the fact that we realize that person doesn't support bilingual education, because that exists in all linguistic communities. So, I would rather have a monolingual principal, and I'll just name Brenda Fox, who is just, or Mary Pearson, who is all over their program, and can tell you forward and backwards what the schedule should look like, et cetera. I'd rather take that monolingual principal who has ownership and skill around dual-immersion implementation than a bilingual administrator who is not cooperative or close-minded to it. And so, it's not as, as important, it is ideal to have the bilingual skills, and our parents would tell you it's a must, but I would, you know, extend that to any of our schools that have a significant population.
And I, I think the one thing I would add is, I think you've heard tonight the theme of professional development from start to conclusion. Just as in our general education monolingual classrooms, our teachers and administrators need professional development support in order to be the best that they can be for our kids. And I would say that GM has really focused this year on providing that professional development to our administrators in a more structured way than we've been able to provide it in years past, given that we haven't had someone in GM's position. In addition to that, our dual-language, dual-language teachers have had really strong support from both Marisol and Michael, and also from Daniel Kogan, who's joined them this year, and it really is an essential piece that can't be overstated.
And there's been a gap between that, because what you find, what we have found is a room full of energetic teachers who love their kids and want to do right by them, learning about how to do this, and discouraged, because they're saying, I'm going back to my building where my principal is not gonna support this type of schedule. And so, us pulling in that in now, so, for example, everything we give to the principals goes to the teachers, everything the teachers get, the principals get copies of, and so, bringing, the big aha this year was content allocation, how much of each subject gets covered in English versus Spanish. I assumed it was getting done, and it turns out, we have huge discrepancies from one school to the other, so we called it out. It's been on paper, we pulled it out, and supported our principals on what will your schedule look like next year? And again, had, from principal to principal, and we had Atkinson stand up and say, you guys who are saying this is new to you, this is what we've been doing for the last four years, and I attribute this content allocation to the scores and the raise in achievement that we've been able to experience. So, it's really holding them accountable for some of the things that we've said we were gonna do, and are on paper, but my theme has been, first, we need to make sure they know, second, we need to support them, and then, third, we can hold them accountable. And so, working with the regional administrators has been a big piece of that, and increasing their understanding of what can be expected, or what should be expected.
Other questions?
I'm waiting for this side over here.
Yeah, well, I'm just really encouraged to hear everything that you're saying. And I guess, so, it sounds as if, in terms of future expansion, so if I'm understanding you right, that for the first time, principals are having an actual committee around future program development, so that's wonderful. And it looks like, in the small print here, new program recommendations for 2014, one Spanish and one less commonly taught language, so we'll be seeing, so that will be over this coming year, this committee will be working on fleshing that out.
Correct. And, and in your packet, you have a timeline that shows what type of activity would be happening in each month to move us along. And we're about a half-month behind, I think, but basically, in February, we said we would be looking at which programs, which languages. And I wasn't allowed to put "at least" in there, but I think, once we look at our student demographics, we will see a compelling reason to look at more than one Spanish-language program, as far as our student demographics and the ability to...
Because what I'm hearing from you is really that balance of the urgency to expand, with also getting it right at the same time, so that's really exactly where we need to be. The other thing is, in your secondary grades enrollment analysis piece, and you touched on this a little bit, but around, just particularly in the middle grades, and maintaining enrollment at 6-8, and the issues you're having there, so you do talk about the potential of merging 6-8 cohorts to be able, in one cluster, to provide greater stability and the ability to provide more course offerings and staff, more staffing. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, in a number of our schools, the group that's moving from fifth to sixth grade ends up being less, fewer than 25 students, and so, the principals are challenged in the master schedule, as well as the staffing for that. And so, we have eight middle schools into, or middle, middle grades into which our Spanish-speaking graduates matriculate into. With those eight configurations and those low numbers, what seems simple to me is to bring together those groups. So, for example, Beach happens to have 28 children moving from fifth to sixth grade, but that's only because they collapsed two classes with attrition. Cesar Chavez, I think we're looking at 20-some. And so, if, when those kids get together, they're still not making enough. And so, it needs to be done in, within the context of enrollment balancing as a district all over, as well as within the work that we're doing with transfer, or enrollment and transfer policies in our lottery. And so, what we envision happening is, we've started, the principals are forming a small group that are looking at the enrollment and transfer policies through the lens of dual-immersion, and what this means, and then, we see ourselves either converging, or at least submitting recommendations to the committee that moves forward with this district-wide, and working with SACIT on what that means, because it's a big deal, to say, you no longer go to this school, you go to that school. We just really want to be thoughtful about that, but I don't believe that we can continue to sustain eight or more middle-school grades, trying to staff and schedule for Spanish.
And do you have a sense of the attrition in terms of it being native speakers, or English, you know, are we, and how that intersects with achieving English proficiency for ELL students? In other words, are we providing opportunities for merging bilingual students all the way through high school, so that they're able to take advantage and have it be an asset-based approach all the way through? Or is it falling off?
I don't have that data off the top of my head, but it would definitely be worth analyzing, and I'll ask Michael to jump in if he does, because he's the guy who has data in his head all the time. One of the things that we're wanting to look at is entry points for students and following them, so that we can see who, when the ELL students do stay, K through 12, what the outcomes are. So, the most preliminarily, preliminary analysis I was able to get was Spanish-speaking students in dual-immersion versus Spanish-speaking ELL students not in dual-immersion for five or more years in our district, and to run some comparisons that way. And so far, the data is supporting what we see on the national level, that our students fare better.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, in the ideal world, we would have a persistent K through 12 immersion option for, you know, everybody, but if we have to be making this, for me, it's like, we have to figure out how we're supporting our merging bilingual students all the way through, so, if we're not able to sustain an immersion, you know, if there's another way, I just, you know, just recontinue to wrestle with this, but I, I worry about some of the demographics and some of the one-way focus options, they're a fantastic opportunity for students, it's wonderful enrichment, but to me, we need to be looking at prioritizing how we're closing the gaps for kids, and so...
Yeah, and just, you know, I can make a guess, just by looking at our middle and high school numbers, that they're still fairly even between Spanish, or I should say, between partner language and English speakers. So, I would guess not, but I will follow up on finding out if we have attrition that is different, if there's a big difference between our native speakers and our native English speakers. We are taking ELL students later, if they qualify, if they have a threshold of literacy, and so, we're doing some recruitment around Russian and Spanish speakers in the middle and high schools, if and when we do have space.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. One of the, you know, things that you stated, and I found it interesting, I mean, it's interesting, the perceptions that people have, particularly principals, in regards to who drives this, and it's more like who holds up this process. And, and, I mean, I think the perception, in particular, I'm struck by the perception that it is the central office that is actually imposing programs. And just for the record, I mean, the, the drive, in terms of dual-language immersion programs, and particularly the placement of those who are emerging bilingual students, or ESL students have benefited, and particularly Latino students have benefited, was driven by, by parent organizing at the local level in all schools. Particularly, I would say, at Marysville, Kelly, and, and, and the Marshall Cluster, Franklin Cluster, that I think led to, to some principals at the local level, particularly at, I would, I would say, Cesar, you know, what was then Clarendon, Porchmouth, and Regler, taking the initiative actually to move forward something. So, it was the initiative of principals that saw the need of their student population, and says, we want to do something about it, particularly as it related to closing the achievement gap. the achievement gap. So, you know, it was not centrally driven, I mean, being and organizing on the other side of it, and trying to push the central office to actually move on it. There were two years of actually holdup in regards to not moving, not even considering it, to the point that I think that, you know, we had to make good use of the press to lift up this issue, to say, "Hey, you know, these are some real inequities happening," given that you have, you know, strong immersion programs, you know, that are beneficial. I mean, I think in terms of enrichment, I think, you know, we need to support those, but are not addressing some of the other needs that we see. So, you know, I was looking at the, so I was struck by that, by the way, in regards to the perception of principals that this is like centrally driven. In the case of Scott, yes, I mean, I think that, you know, last year, at least, not centrally driven, but at least the board, you know, kind of saying, "Look, you've been talking to the folks in the community about putting this forth. You have a strong, or large student population, particularly from the Latino community, and yet you are putting forth a program that is not as proven, in some ways, which was literacy squared in particular, as a dual-language immersion program, you know, with a better track record, at least in our district." So, you know, for the school board, at least for the board members, to say, "Hey, you know, either get it together, or, you know, move on." I can, I can cap to that part in regards to my message to folks. So, but again, I don't see necessarily a centrally difference, given that, I mean, we were hearing those from the folks, from parents at Scott, that, you know, that we needed to address that need. And, you know, also in regards to the achievement gap that still, you know, remains there. So, for me, I think, you know, that's not, you know, it's hard for me to buy.
May I clarify?
Uh huh.
What I'm focused on is us building systems that survive the loss of any key people. So when you have a principal that's excited about it and gets it started, we should have the kind of momentum and structure that survives their loss. So there is quite a history of this actually being grassroots. Ainsworth was started by the folks at Ainsworth, but they're no longer here. And so when we have a new principal coming into a school that has started that, it needs to be a part of their culture, so that any principal comes in knows what they've signed up for at building XYZ. And so when we place principals in there without front-loading and supporting them, they're, the perception that I've heard is that, I've been told I have to do this, you know, this is what we do. And so I think we have both. We have some great folks in all of our schools, and some have more expertise, experience, and knowledge around the program than others.
Right. And I agree with you in that part, by the way, because we saw that in Cesar Chavez this year in particular, in regards to how effective the central office was in communicating in regards to the expectations and awareness of the program that was there. And also in regards to, in particular, the expansion of that program, because I think to identify clearly that there is a, an important part of it, in making sure that we start programs to be able to be sustainable in the long run, and that means that we have to start at least two kindergarten classes.
Right. And once the culture is created in a building, they won't need central office to tell them how, one principal to the other, you know what I mean? When you're walking in, the same way the principal tells you, there's a behavior classroom, there's this and there's that, that would be a smooth transition into any program. And working with our HR department on what are the qualifications we would like, what are the things that a principal should know, going into that, I think, is a start of that. But we want it to be so that it's a natural part of the way the school runs.
You know, the concern that I continue to have is that, you know, it's particularly, you know, like on that document that you put forth in regards to the criteria for site selection, and, you know, you have a number of things that are there. What I'm concerned about is that the role that, or the weighing of, you know, particularly, like say, school administration, teacher, and staff support, because I seen it work the other way in, and I see it right now with one of the, one of those schools that should add another kindergarten class or two. And I saw it in the southeast also, that, you know, the principal basically outright told me, "Look," and we heard it tonight, by the way, you know, a principal that is overwhelmed, or, you know, unable to see, you know, the challenges that are there, and to look at creating another program. The principal basically said to me, "Look, I'm studying for my PhD, okay, one. Two, I already told my teachers that I wasn't going to bring another program, okay?" They had, you know, the numbers there to be able to start the program, they had the interest on the part of all the students. And again, there was nothing that happened, because they weren't willing to it.
Right.
The concern that I have is that there's no, no real incentive for mainline teachers, you know, that are already in their, in their school site already, to start, you know, dual-language immersion programs. So we have to, I think, find a balance in regards to, how do we look at, in regards to the district as a whole, to what I hope is the common ground, which is, you know, trying to close the achievement gap, trying to increase academic success for all students through this, I think more conservative interventions.
So I just, I do want to say that, that in conversations with union leadership, last week, we had a conversation specifically around supporting the growth of dual-language teachers, and how do we grow our dual-language programs in a way where we can actually support the students that we're putting into the programs with teachers who are able to teach them. And I think we're at a different place in people's readiness to have that, a more planned pathway toward the opportunity to be a dual-language teacher in a dual-language school, and to actually pursue that option within your own region to meet the needs of your own students. So I think that opportunity, I feel a shift in that from when I started here three years ago. The other piece that I would, that I would share, that just, that I, that I feel is important to note, is what I heard that principal say, was he has 43 languages spoken at his school, and that though there is an in-the-teens percentage of native Spanish speakers, that it is not a 50% group of Spanish speakers. And that makes a different conversation for a principal to have with his staff and his community. And, and that's not to say that only, we only go forward with the willing, but it definitely means that we need to bring everybody's perspective to the table into those conversations, and understand what, what we're investing in, and what that also means for students who may not speak either English or the target language.
And could I point out that we start and end with student demographics and student achievement? That's what decides if and when we'll do programs. And so I just want to acknowledge that our teachers on special assignment have been doing an incredible job without the licensure or authority of administrators. And so this document, when it was originally created, was from a couple of teachers on special assignment who would work with principals to understand who the students are coming to their school, what the need is. That's not a deal breaker anymore, whether or not the principal will go along. The approach that we're taking with this committee is to look at the demographics, our student achievement, and determine what is it that we need to do. We have to look at our data to see how students in these programs are doing versus those who are not.
So, can I, I'm going to, yes, please. Okay. So if I look at the PPS dual-language secondary grades enrollment sheet, so we're talking about a plan. We have two schools, Bridger K-8 and Lent, that you don't even give a projection for 50 years, or 50 students, because they don't have the space.
Right.
But yet, we just heard tonight that the plan is to make a second strand at Lent. That's just confounding to me.
Right.
Like, it either anticipates reconfiguring the cluster, which is when people begin to say, "Well, you had this planned years ago," or it makes it seem like, "Do you not have the ability to plan?"
Right.
So help me through that one.
Yeah. The challenge that we are experiencing with Lent is space, and so I have a theory that the students who go to Lent anyway would be the participants in an additional section of dual language. And so we're working with the lottery applications, and frankly, some pretty aggressive outreach to make sure that the families that already attend Lent are aware of what dual immersion is as an opportunity for their children, and get their interest. So the reason that that principal did not feel compelled to open that other section is based on an assumption that most of the native English speakers would be coming from somewhere else. And so where we're regrouping is to say, "Have we informed the native English speakers of this community?" And so doing some outreach in that way.
So to follow up on the discussion, you touched a little bit on enrollment balancing. We've been pretty consistent, for at least the time I've been on the board, the past two years, that we need at least two sections in the middle grade of each student.
Right.
Fifty students does not get us that.
Right.
So why are we setting up our immersion programs to not have what we're calling a really filled-out schedule, knowing what we already know, assuming the budgets stay as they are?
With all due respect, that is my exact question when I came in. And that, and that is part of the reason that we did not move forward to open something next fall. It has to be done within the context of where the students are going to go for middle and high school, and part of that context has to do with all the other schools coming together. And so Judy Brennan of Enrollment and Transfer has agreed to co-chair the expansion committee with me, because we have to have facilities and the folks that know about what's going on in buildings. I mean, I can come up with stuff, and then I hear, "They have no room," you know, I don't know those parts. So just having everyone at the table. And I believe Bridger had submitted a request to add a kindergarten last year, and they were denied that based on the space challenges. They have two behavior classrooms in there. So they couldn't grow it out theoretically, because they do attract a lot of transfer students for their program.
And I guess then, the last question has to do with, if I'm looking at Cesar Chavez, the number of sixth graders they're going to have next year in 2013, 14, is 12?
Yep.
I mean, I don't even know what question to ask about that, other than how do the students get...
What are we going to do? Yeah. Well, and one of the pieces is that Cesar Chavez students are supposed to matriculate into Roosevelt with Beach Kids. Beach Kids are not going to Roosevelt, is what we're finding. And so we're doing a survey with those students, those fifth graders.
Where are they going?
They tend to be going back to their neighborhood high schools, is what we have been able to identify as a trend.
So students are transferring into Roosevelt, or excuse me, into Beach for the immersion program, and then they're going back to their neighborhood cluster schools for...
But the numbers are just incredibly low of the students at Beach. And so it adds to the problem.
Adds to the opportunity for a real serious conversation around enrollment and transfer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
We are now going to move on to the next item of our agenda, which is the capital bond overview, budgeting and financing. This is the fourth of five overviews we, as a board, will receive on the capital bond. Superintendent Smith?
So I'm going to introduce CJ Sylvester, our chief operating officer, and Jim Owens, the director of our Office of School Modernization, who will do the next installment of our educational session on the capital bond.
Good evening. Again, I'm CJ Sylvester, chief operating officer for the district, and I would like to introduce, in addition to Jim Owens, who's the executive director of the Office of School Modernization, David Wine, who's our deputy chief financial officer, who will be doing this evening's presentation. As always, I'll be available to answer any questions you have, once the presentation's complete.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I know it's a late hour, and we'll move through these slides as quickly as we can, and then invite questions that you may have of us. Again, these are the program topics that we're presenting, we've been presenting. Our last design and construction topic will actually be presented on April the 1st, not March the 18th. And then, starting on April 29, we'll be beginning our staff monthly updates to you. In terms of our topics this evening, these are the ones that we're planning to cover, and these are all included in your, in your package. Starting with our bond measure that voters approved, highlighting the primary packages that are, that are in the $482 million program. This is a document that you'll be seeing on a monthly basis as we move forward, and it highlights the five broad categories of the work, starting with our centerpiece, three high school full modernizations and the replacement of Fabian. That's the first category, the $278 million, followed by our physical facility and educational facility improvements. And again, the difference there is our educational facility improvements are our science classroom improvements at up to 39 schools, and then our physical facility are the remaining items of work relative to seismic and ADA re-roofing. And then, in the debt repayment category, that, of course, is a separate item, the $45 million, and then something that we call program costs, that I'll touch on briefly in terms of the financial component of that. In addition to the bond work, there are opportunities for us to inject other fund sources that would become part of the projects. And so we'd like to be able to present other categories of cost, if you will, or of financing, if you will, on the projects. And what you're seeing on this slide is a depiction of the seismic rehabilitation grant program that we have for Alameda, the 1.5 million. As we get into Fabian, and we start seeing how much Concordia is able to contribute, then that'll also be another component. So as we look month to month at the program, we'll always want to true opt to that $482 million for the bond side, and then be able to show what other fund sources there are that contribute to the, to the projects. In terms of the program elements, we, I'm going to really touch on four very briefly, because these are items that I think it's important to recognize, that you'll be seeing changes from month to month as, as we move forward in the, in the eight-year program. The first one is the $20 million program contingency, which was an item that was identified separately in the bond measure, that was, was therefore unknowns for contingencies that might occur. These are above and beyond contingencies that we have built into the project level, and it's a category that would only be used based on board discretion. So as we would identify unknown issues that would surface, we would be presenting those to you as part of our, part of our regular reporting. The second category is, is the biggest at the program level, that being the construction inflation, inflation costs. Over an eight-year program, it's hard to say what we'll be seeing in the way of construction costs. Certainly, these last several years, it's been somewhat flat, but hard to say what we'll be looking at. So we put together a plan that tried to project what we think the construction cost inflation would be. And so this category at the program level would be applied to projects based on where we are in the eight-year program. And we actually have a plan on how these, this would be allocated, given what our inflation data would show us. The third category is the swing space improvements in transportation. Because of the work we're doing at two of the high schools, and having to swing students off to other sites, and the replacement of Fabian, we did want to recognize that there are also costs associated with making improvements at the swing space, plus the cost for the yellow bus transportation to that site. So again, it's another program element that would be allocated to the project level to support that work. And then finally, a $5 million component for transportation improvements with the city's Bureau of Transportation through intergovernmental agreement that we're working with, with the city. Two additional components that aren't listed here, I'll just briefly mention, it's not on this slide, but one is our bond issuance costs that we have in the program. on this slide, but one is our bond issuance costs that we have in the program. We have a $3 million budget for what might be incurred as a result of selling bonds. And then lastly, we have a $1.5 million component for master planning at the six remaining high schools. So together, that should add up to that 84.5 million, if you're checking the math on your sheets. Under our program accountability, again, the comment about aligning the budget to the voter-approved bond, we're executing a program that needs to conform to what voters approved and what the bond measure states. So as we look at this from the budget or financial perspective, we'll be validating this every month. The chewing up of the budget to the 482 million dollars reflects not only our budget, but also looking at what we're encumbering in the way of new contracts, what our expenditures are, and what we're forecasting. The dynamics of the program are such that we will be forecasting monthly based on what we know about the work. And we'll actually have a good picture as we go forward month to month on exactly where we stand. We're using the district's financial systems to track this. We have a web-based project management information system called E-Builder where we're tracking project-level information. That'll be a principal transparency tool that we'll be using when we're reporting information on the individual projects and at the program level. And then of course, our district financial system, PeopleSoft, will also be integrated so that we have that showing the financial performance on the bond. I briefly touched on the allocation of those program levels, components to the projects. And so that's another feature that will be included. And then lastly, a board reporting framework. We are planning to, during our presentation on April 1st, when we do the final program overview topic on design and construction, showcase a pretty innovative tool that I think you'll find very useful to see program status using the principles of the balanced scorecard, if you're familiar with that. The balanced scorecard is a tool that allows different perspectives on, typically it's used in businesses to reflect different perspectives. And so what we're planning to propose is one, looking at the budget perspective, another on schedule, a third on stakeholder review, and a fourth on equity. And we'll be talking more about that at the April 1st meeting. But the budget component is one that's very important to track and then to be able to report on. Under our accountability, we have really four different levels that we'll be reviewing on a regular basis with you. The first actually starts with the staff presentations. We will be, on a monthly basis, updating on a number of metrics relative to the program. And then these are the other categories that will help ensure the accountability, the first being the Bond Accountability Committee itself, which of course was stood up in December. And we're meeting on a quarterly basis with them. And they'll actually be doing reporting to you on at least a quarterly basis. The first report that the committee is planning to present is actually on April 29th. And so they'll be doing an independent assessment of how the program has been stood up, the different aspects of it. Staff will also be making our first report to you as well. So hopefully give you an opportunity to be able to see the independent assessment from the Bond Accountability Committee and then what staff is reporting. The other two items depicted here are the performance and the financial audit. And this is something that we also will be doing on an annual basis. And our Bond Accountability Committee will be looking at that information, as will staff, and will be reporting where we are with that. And then finally, on our cash flow, this doesn't go into too much detail, but again, it's the cash flow plan for the program was built on the eight-year profile. And we have a cash flow summary of each of the projects based on the proposed conceptual project framework and sequencing. And so we looked at what we were expecting in the way of encumbrance, which is the term for the amount in contract awards, expenditure, which is the amount we're paying out on invoice and progress payments on a monthly basis, and then that forecast that is really a future look relative to the budget. And then each bond issuance itself, and David will be touching on this in a moment, is will be designed so that we spend each of the GO bond issuance down as we move forward in the program. So the first bond issuance, when it occurs, that'll be what we're starting with as we begin the work. And at this point, I'd like to introduce David Wine, who will be speaking about the bond issuance plan and some other details on bond sales.
So a lot of things on bond issuance. So voters authorized us to issue $482 million face value of bonds. And as part of the campaign, we indicated a combination of short and long-term debt and tax rates of up to $1.10 per thousand for the first eight years, and then 30 cents a thousand for the remainder of the 20-year period. So that's one of the constraints we will be, those are two constraints we'll be operating under. Then thirdly, there are IRS arbitrage rules that limit issuance to the amount that we can reasonably expect to within three years. I realize once we start talking about arbitrage, we get a bit financially geeky here. But I was asked to define arbitrage, and it really is the relationship between two prices, or in this particular context, two interest rates. So we're paying a particular interest rate to borrow the money. And until we spend it, we have that money invested currently at a very modest interest rate. And there's a differential between those two, and we have to report that to the IRS. And as part of that overall oversight, we have to, as I say, limit the amount of debt we issue at any one point to that which we can reasonably expect to spend within three years. So the cash flow that Jim talked about, the expectation of when we're going to be spending money is an important consideration in terms of how we issue. So other variables we take into account, tax assessed value, that's the rate, that's the value per property that we apply the tax rate to, and that will change over time. Tax collection rates, we want to be sure that we understand how much tax we actually collect. We've got good long-term historical data from Multnomah County on that. Interest rates, and then the timelines for expenditures, because those will probably change somewhat over time. So we're working with our financial advisor to identify a first bond issue that fits all of these parameters, that provides the lowest cost to taxpayers, and offers us flexibility to respond to changes in some of those factors over time. We actually have a recommendation ready to bring you, and we will be bringing a staff report and a draft resolution for bond authorization to your next meeting one week from today. As far as budgeting is concerned, the bond program will be budgeted each year as part of our annual budget process. The budget will include revenues, so interest on investments, grant funds, and other sources, which primarily include the proceeds from many bond issuance, as well as any expenditures in each year from those resources. There'll be a narrative in the proposed budget that breaks out the budget by major projects. So for example, some are improvement projects for 2013, each of the high school projects, et cetera, and shows that multi-year budget history and reconciliation to the total 482 million dollar program. And again, we will have an amendment to the 1213, the current year budget, to reflect activity that we now expect to take place during the current fiscal year. And we expect to bring you a staff report and a budget amendment to your next meeting, which frankly is exciting.
That completes our short presentation this evening. I'd like to open it up. Any questions?
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you. No questions? So we'll now consider the remaining items on our business agenda, having already voted on Resolution 4735. At this time, I'd like to pull out Resolution 4736 for a separate vote. So we will now consider Resolution 4736, a resolution encouraging water fluoridation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Regan moves, and Director Adkin seconds. The motion to adopt Resolution 4736. Ms. Houston, do we have any public comment on this resolution?
No.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Yes, I wanted to go ahead and give a little talk about what this is, and then hopefully folks can chat about it. So on May 21st, residents of Portland will have the opportunity to vote on Measure 26151, which requires the city of Portland to fluoridate our water supply. Resolution 4736 states our support for this effort because we know that the health of our students has a direct impact on their ability to learn. So in Multnomah County, Washington, and Clackamas Counties, 21% of children suffer from untreated dental decay. This often results in severe pain, infection, and needlessly missed school days impacting their education. Portland's rate of tooth decay is 40% higher than in Seattle. The principal difference between the two cities is that Seattle has fluoridated water. Fluoride is a natural occurring mineral found in nearly all water supplies. A small increase will provide children with the optimal level of protection. Fluoridation is expected to reduce tooth decay in Portland by at least 30%. The National Centers for Disease Control calls water fluoridation one of the most important public health advances in the 20th century. It's a tested and safe and effective way to reduce tooth decay. As an equity issue, dental decay disproportionately impacts low-income families and children, many of whom are uninsured or underinsured. Low-income children suffer twice the rate of untreated decay and nearly three times the rate of rampant decay. And rampant decay basically means more, seven or more cavities. In my own family's case, we had a son who suffered from rampant tooth decay because we were not informed when we moved to Portland that the water wasn't fluoridated. In our case, the damage my son endured was to his baby teeth, and we had health insurance to get us through the intensive treatment that he required. Many families don't have the opportunity to fix the damage, and children suffer lifelong consequences. So for some fun facts, more than 70% of Americans are connected to a fluoridated public water system. In Oregon, only about 20% of residents have fluoridated water. Of the 50 largest cities in the United States, Portland is only one of two that don't have fluoridated water. And in Oregon, there are several cities that already have fluoridated water supplies, including Salem, Beaverton, and Forest Grove. So in introducing this, I wanted to thank Mayor Hales and the city council for placing the measure on the ballot. I think this is a measure that will certainly help to improve our children's health and school attendance.
Any other comments?
Just wanted to thank Director Regan for her leadership in bringing this forward. I'm really pleased and happy to be supporting this.
I mentioned something. I think this is a, I think a personal interest to me. It's based on my experience, the community that I belong to, the community I serve on a regular basis, is often disproportionately impacted by these issues. Very personally, we, the organization I work for partnered in starting a Head Start classroom two years ago. The majority of these three-to-five-year-olds in this Head Start classroom had either treated or untreated tooth decay. That is, and this is the Native American community, the community that we, has both the largest achievement gap within our district and also has the lowest four-year cohort graduation rate within our district. There's no doubt in my mind that when we look at ways for us to impact our overall outcomes within this district, this is one of those ways we can do that. And that's one of the reasons why I'm supportive of this.
Any other comments? Nope? Okay. So we'll now vote on Resolution 4736. All in favor?
Flavor.
It's 10 o'clock. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. No. Resolution 4736 is approved by a vote of five to one with Director Sargent absent and Student Representative Garcia absent.
And Coach Abelale, I do know that Director Sargent, who isn't here tonight, is very supportive of this as well.
Thank you. We'll now move on to consider the rest of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the remaining items on business agenda?
There is one change. On page 45, it's to Resolution 4730. There's one employee number on there that shouldn't be, and that's employee 009118. It's towards the bottom of the page.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Director Knowles moves, and Director Adkin seconds. The adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, do we have any citizen comment on the business agenda?
I have four signed up.
Okay.
I have Dr. William Toffler and Victoria DeVincent.
I'm not sure if you guys were here earlier, but the rules for public testimony are the same. So you'll have three minutes. Green light will appear until you have one minute left, in which a yellow light will appear. When your time is done, a red light will appear, and if you could conclude your comments at that time. Thanks.
By the way, I applaud your decision on fluoridation as a five-to-one decision. Thanks. For those who don't remember, I'm Dr. William Toffler. I'm a professor of family medicine at RHSU. I've been working there, teaching residents, doing research, and seeing patients for almost 27 years. My wife and I support the public schools with our property taxes, and most of our seven children have matriculated in Portland public schools. But I want to speak in support of Mr. Bill Dis, who has the integrity to risk his livelihood in the best interests of his students. While I recognize that some of you may not agree with his beliefs or with some of what I'm about to share, I want to express my appreciation for you affording me the time to speak. I particularly appreciate those of you who may disagree for your respectful listening, particularly after you've been here for almost four hours. As I understand it, there have been numerous complaints by some school officials who don't like what Mr. Dis believes, or what he shares with his students, or what he does with his free time. On some occasions in the past, these school officials have been taken to task even by the ACLU, who recognizes the need to protect free speech. In essence, the ACLU condemned the poor judgment of school officials who sought to force conformity of thought on an award-winning Portland teacher. More recently, school officials were apparently upset by Mr. Dis, who didn't want an affiliate of Planned Parenthood to interrupt in a certain precious time for tutoring his students who need help with math and science. As you're well aware, several months ago, The Oregonian reported that Oregon has the fourth worst graduation rate in the nation. In the area of science, only 60% of Portland 11th graders are meeting standards. Given this dismal data, I find it remarkable that school officials are expending their energy, legal resources, shrinking tax dollars, in your valuable time, trying to fire an individual who's laboring diligently to help reverse this trend. In essence, help the school officials themselves be successful. The misplaced priorities of these school officials speak volumes. The lengthy litany of their attacks on Mr. Dis makes transparent their inability to honor diversity. It unmasked their bigotry against people of faith, unmasked their intolerance for people and teachers who promote integrity of the body and who encourage students to seek commitment prior to casual sex. It unmasked their contempt for those who believe that all life, born and unborn, is inherently valuable. So once again, I ask each of you, do you believe in diversity? Will you allow a committed, talented, and award-winning teacher to maintain his integrity? Will you protect his right of conscience? I, again, certainly hope so. As I said in December, I hope you will because Mr. Dis is exactly the kind of teacher I would want for my children, not only because of his talents, but because, more importantly, of his role modeling. In short, Mr. Dis has demonstrated the capacity to follow the courage of his convictions, and in so doing, he provides a priceless lesson, not just for his students, but for all of the entire community. Rather than fire him, I believe Portland public schools should hire more teachers like Mr. Dis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I'm Vicki, Victoria DeVincent. My son had the privilege of being a student of Mr. Dis's freshman year of high school. My son struggles with ADD and dyslexia, and Mr. Dis was always there to take care of him and encourage him. So, and when I was in the Navy and not much older than the kids that are being taught at Benson, I had been told that people appreciate somebody that's consistent. Even if they're consistent, they use... Even if they're consistent, they used a different word, jerk, they appreciate it because you know where that person stands. So, you know, I appreciate your time in considering this while I'm speaking. The issue with the teen outreach program, we consistently know Mr. Dis doesn't believe that that should be there. As a parent, my student is now, we're still paying tax dollars, but he's in a public charter school that's online because he needed the more one-on-one attention, even with an IEP. All of the teachers have been awesome. Since I have a student that has to be homeschooled, I do believe the system's failing, but I don't believe the people are failing. The kids are not failing, the teachers are not failing, you ladies and gentlemen are not failing. There are definitely strong and, you know, amazing hearts behind everybody in Portland, and including our school district. What we need in teachers, we always hear, "Oh, why don't we have teachers like we used to?" Well, teachers used to be able to give encouragement, have communication, and have respect. I don't know of any time Mr. Dis disrespected any child and pushed his feelings on them. He stands up for them, he encourages them, he communicates with them, he communicates with their parents. He's what we need, and he's consistent. So, I mean, he is consistently teaching our children and encouraging our children. And to see our school district lose a teacher that should be an example would just be heartbreaking. And, you know, I'd be willing to share with all the parents that don't know, because their lives are so busy. I mean, my life is busy, but I believe we should definitely keep Mr. Dis employed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, I have Sean Nygaard and Ryan Olson.
Members of the board, thank you for devoting your careers for the betterment of our schools and our children. As a scientist, I've chosen a different route, but I'm also very concerned about our students. All through my graduate education, I volunteered to lead a program in North Portland Humboldt neighborhood called Potter's Clay. We ministered to approximately 150 children, mainly from disadvantaged families, children who came from poverty, who came from broken homes, children who had the stack, or the deck stacked against them in many ways, oftentimes coming from generations of poverty and dysfunction. And as we heard tonight previously, the issue is not race. There were whites, there were blacks, there were Hispanics, but the common issue really was broken families. You, of course, know the statistics. Not having a father at home doubles a child's chance of dropping out of school. We need to support programs that encourage the stability of our families. And as educators, there are ways, I believe, that you can do that. And one of them, I think, is by discouraging the efforts of Planned Parenthood to get children involved sexually at a young age. I saw firsthand how this type of behavior really led to a pattern of broken relationships, emotional scarring, patterns that would prevent these youth from really connecting in a lifelong relationship and developing a stable family. So I think that is the belief that Mr. Bill Dis shares, and as he has reached out to his children, I think he's really trying to protect his children because of these beliefs. He's trying to protect them from a philosophy and a teaching that he thinks will harm them. And that type of protection is exactly the type of teachers that we need to encourage in our schools. I think that if every educator in Portland cared as much for his students as Mr. Bill Dis does, I think that the scores would be skyrocketing, and the problems that we're facing would just disappear. So I encourage you to treat Mr. Bill Dis equitably, even if you disagree with his opinions. Certainly, we can have the equity to tolerate those who believe differently, but still, I think, share your concern for these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Olson, O-L-S-O-N. I've had two children go through Portland Public School, both through Portland Public and Open Meadow. I had my daughter graduate from Open Meadow, my son graduated from Benson. He went to Open Meadow in middle school. I'm here also in support of Mr. Dis. I do take heart in the fact that we, my family originally went through Kenton Elementary, which under Phillips was taken out, as well as Applegate combined. At that point, the Kentons' group was then taken over to Chief Joe, and now the decision had been made to close Chief Joe, but as of your guys' decisions, it has now been decided to keep open, and I do appreciate that, showing both possibility of change and open to discussion. In regards to Mr. Dis, there are things I disagree with him on. There, I have a differing opinion than most people have regarding Planned Parenthood, but that is not a justification or a full belief of who he is. He is very committed to his opinions, and he stands by his convictions. One of the things I did do is I contacted my son, and he texted me back, "All I would say to the board is that I have rarely seen a person as dedicated to his school and his students as he is." And that's from a graduate from Benson from last year. The other thing I want to point out is when there has been problems with Benson, such as the possible changeover that occurred in the last two years, he was one of many teachers, but one of the more notable teachers that stood up. He was one of them that walked down here when the class, the whole school basically walked down here for the board meeting. And he's had at heart what he assumes is the best for the kids and for Benson, and I think it would be a terrible disservice to lose him as an instructor, especially when we had the discussion on continuing, excuse me for getting the incorrect terminology, but the training and such. He's got excellent skills when it comes to electronics and the sciences and math, and those are the ones that we need. And I can't count the number of times I've gone to the local colleges and people are having trouble with math, but he seems to be able to communicate. I had problems when he started, my kids started with him, but by the end, I have full respect for him, and I would hope that the school board would too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'd actually like to thank everybody that stuck around to provide testimony. I know it is late, it's not just our time. So with that, is there any board discussion on the business agenda? The board will now vote on the business agenda, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with Director Sargent absent and Student Representative Garcia absent. The next meeting of the board will be a study session held on March 11th at 6:00 p.m. I'm just going to remind folks that on March 18th, we will be at Madison High School with the governor in a town hall, starting at 6:00 o'clock p.m. This meeting is adjourned.[1705.47]